Session for NRS 288, 220, sub-4 to discuss labor relations with the district's management representatives. For discussion only.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know at this time it's typical for us to go into closed session, which means we'll have the folks running the TV station turn off their cameras. So we'll just provide them a few minutes before we invite Mr. Cockrell to the podium.
Yeah, we'll be out in the lobby.
Okay. Do I report this the entire time?
Yes.
All right.
Just the, um...
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. President, I believe we're in a position where we can carry on.
There's a lot of words involved here.
I like the bigger print over the things that you have.
President and Board of Trustees, thank you very much. My name is Charlie Cockrell. I'm here to kind of brief you on where we are on negotiations. And I'm going to, I've provided you a handout, which is a confidential document, and I'm going to use that. Page one is kind of an outline, and then there's some attachments I'm going to go through with you. There's all kinds of legislation that was recently passed that affects school districts, personnel, finances, collective bargaining. I'm going to really concentrate on the major sections that address collective bargaining. I'm not going to get off into how you employ administrators, or which ones are at will, and that sort of thing. So I'm going to focus just on the major aspects of the legislation that addresses collective bargaining. Most of that was in SB 241 and SB 168. SB 241, Section 1, addresses union leave. And what that does now is, most of your public sector contracts have provided employer-paid leave for union members, for union business. Union business being negotiations, being grievance handling, being negotiations, and disciplinary matters. What the law requires now is that the employer be fully reimbursed, either through a reimbursement or through a monetary concession by the union for any union time. Second major legislation is SBT 241, Section 1.3, which addressed evergreen clauses in collective bargaining agreements. Those are clauses that basically state, on the expiration of the contract, the contract stays in full force and effect until a new contract is negotiated. Under those provisions, you would still get step increases, teachers' column increases, longevity increases. And so that legislation basically put a halt to that. It said that, at the stated end of a collective bargaining agreement, there will be no increases above what your salary and benefit package was on June 30th, with two very narrow exceptions. One is that the employer may raise compensation in the first quarter. The first quarter being defined as the first fiscal quarter following expiration of the contract. So for all of your contracts that expired June 30th of 2015, that would be the period July 1st through September 30th. The other exception is for increases in PERS rates. That does not have a, that's not tied to a quarter, as compensation is. And that section has got a lot of consternation with the various associations and unions throughout the state. SB 168 addresses fiscal emergency. They put in a provision about four years ago, requiring parties to negotiate over what a fiscal emergency is, so you could open a contract, so you didn't have the disaster that happened in Southern Nevada with contracts that couldn't be opened, and some local governments almost went out of business. Very few units agreed to fiscal emergency provisions, so the legislature came up with their own. And that is, anytime you have a 5% reduction in budgeted revenues, recurring revenues, then the employer can unilaterally reopen negotiations to address the shortfall. So it's kind of with that legislative background that we kind of begin. Also, introducing myself, Charlie Cockrell, I've been assisting the district for a number of years. I was in private practice by myself with an Oregon attorney for a number of years, then by myself. Last fall, I went to work for and with Allison McKenzie Law Firm, and really enjoying the relationship, been there for almost a year. They wanted to expand their labor law presence and expertise. In January, we brought on a new attorney, Thoren Teller, who's assisting me throughout the state in labor negotiations matters. He was the former Labor Commissioner for the state of Nevada, is an attorney with a lot of experience, a lot of labor law experience. And so he brings a fresh face to the team as well, for you. He's been sitting through the negotiations thus far. We've indicated to the unions that the district is not on the hook for that, that's being paid by our firm, so he can get training and experience in doing that. So we've let the associations know that the district isn't paying for two attorneys at the bargaining table. So where are we in negotiations with the backdrop of that wonderful legislation? Wonderful from some perspectives, not so wonderful from others. We've begun negotiations with OCEA. We've had four bargaining sessions with them. I think it's been a really good atmosphere. We're kind of doing an internal IBB process, interest-based bargaining on non-monetary issues. We've, they have indicated that they may want to do IBB with a federal mediator as well, on financial issues, if we get that far. They do, they're not interested in having interest-based bargaining with the other three units, like we did last time. They want to just kind of serve their own members at that process. We've TA'd a number of articles, or issues with the teachers. Those TAs are attached. They say tentative agreement at the top, and most of them are very minor clarifications in the collective bargaining agreement. The one that isn't, that is a change, would be how the calendar is going to be processed in the future. As you're all aware, in the past, the calendar was something that was voted upon by OCEA. That is, they would vote when the winter, the traditional winter break is, and when the traditional spring break is, and then the district would craft a calendar, and we're waiting for votes, and it was a cumbersome process. And what we're going to try is to substitute that with the district determining the calendar, all aspects of the calendar. And the only way that it would get back to OCEA setting those two vacation periods would be if we can't reach a calendar by March 15th, which my understanding isn't going to happen. Did you want to address this just a little bit? She was brought in to the negotiations process to kind of assist, since that's one of her responsibilities, putting together the calendar. And so she worked with both teams to come up with kind of a way going forward. And you're very comfortable with this new process?
As we had talked with Mr. Wallace and some of the members of the negotiation team, they recognized that as we enter into partnerships with business and industry and higher education, there might be better times to have our spring break than other times. We have students right now going to Jump Start College, who go to the high school, and then they are on our spring break, but they still have to go to college. And then when the college is on their spring break, they still have to go to high school for the other class or classes that they have. Now, that's just a small group of folks, but we're looking to build that program. So that's just an example. And sometimes it helps us to coordinate maybe the holiday times, based on where the days fall and professional involvement and... So we were the only district in the state where the Teachers Association set holidays or mandated certain things with the calendar. In other 17 districts, the district offices always put that calendar together, of course, with employee, with input from the bargaining groups.
So we're looking forward to that as a different and more streamlined process going forward. You can see, the other changes are fairly routine. One that was to address one of their interests is where we agree that a teacher is on an unpaid leave of absence. Their concern is, in the past few years, that people have been coming back and getting into the pecking order, when they shouldn't be getting into the pecking order as far as selecting a position. And so what we've agreed to do is that if someone is on a one-year leave of absence, or however long it is, that they're on that leave of absence, and they don't come into the pecking order until we publicly advertise vacancies. And I think both sides were happy with that change. Fiscal emergency was updated to what the new definition in the statute is. Really, some fairly minor stuff. And there isn't that much more, other than we've provided the association proposals on union leave, which would basically track the law. It would require either reimbursement or a concession, so we've got more discussion on that at our upcoming session on Friday. Financial issues. They have given us a wish list, but before I get into that, there's obviously been a major change in how districts are going to be funded going forward. And that is, rather than the traditional count day that we had before, where third week in September, you would have a weighted, an unweighted count, and you would determine, based on that count, how much money you're going to get come hell or high water, basically, for the next year. And that's not going to be the process going forward. The process is going to be a daily enrollment count. I'm going to have A.J. kind of address this briefly, but what he sensitized us to was that if you looked at the last three or four years, if you do the new methodology, we're losing students during the year, to the tune of about $500,000. And so where you would be guaranteed that $500,000 for the entire school year, under the old way of counting, under the new way of counting, that's not the way it's going to go forward. He's also raised a concern that we, at least, are projecting, ignoring fund balance, our revenues are below our expenditures for the upcoming year. Now, obviously, fund balance is a major component. Fund balance, and we'll get into this in a little more detail, but looks like it's going to be in the neighborhood of, what, about 15% to 20% when all the dust settles, which is a fairly healthy fund balance. But the problem is, is you're not taking enough revenue to pay if you didn't have that fund balance. Andrew, do you want to just address bare bones what the finances are right now, and what we're looking at?
So should I?
Sure.
We approved the amended budget, the final budget back in May. The deficit that was approved at that time within that budget was about $2,610,000. So on the left-hand side of the page, about halfway down, you'll see that $2,610,000 budget deficit. So since then, what has transpired since May, which has been significant, there have been quite a few changes on the revenue side and on the expense side. And so just to kind of walk you through what I've been seeing, and how I'm interpreting everything, and where I think we end up. On the revenue side, so the per pupil amount increased from 66.37 per student up to 69.08, so $6,908 per student. Now, if our enrollment stayed the same from the previous year, our weighted enrollment, up in the top there, under revenue changes, the first thing in green, per pupil increase, assuming that enrollment gets back to the 73.26, that'd be just over $2 million from what was actually in the final budget from May. Now, with the average daily enrollment, which we've talked a little bit, I'll talk about more tonight. When I look at the last three years, and actually, I'll show the detail of it tonight. In two of the last three years, the loss has been nearly $500,000, and what would have happened in my attempt to try to go back and look at applying that idea to our previous school years. So that's what I have for a loss, essentially. We're supposed to get this much more in per pupil funding, but due to losing students throughout the year, it'll be reduced by $500,000. And then, on top of that, you have where enrollment is trending, as these first days of school come in, and I'll speak to that tonight as well. But that is, as of yesterday, whatever, what the enrollment was yesterday, if I take that in, and I wait that out, as they do in the Nevada Plan formula, we are down about 40 kids on a weighted basis, which translates into a 276, a further reduction of $276,000 from that, what was, would have been a normal increase in previous years. So in total, then, it seems that revenue, the revenue increase from getting more per pupil, but then taking into account the average daily enrollment, and otherwise, a lower starting point of students, would be about $1.26 million in additional revenue. So then if you go back to that $2.6 million deficit line, you can see below that, I have the change in revenue. So it's adding back to that, it helps out that deficit. On the expense side, this has been, well, there's been a lot going on since May. First, there's been in the news quite a bit about these ed savings accounts. There's a lot of concern, I think, on our side, and with some of the private institutions in town, as to what that is going to do to all of us. I have no real way to gauge what that is going to look like. And so we know that there might be parents who are interested in doing this for, you know, an hour a day, or possibly full-time, and then bringing their kids out after 100 days. But to recognize something significant, because it could be significant, I have a loss of $100,000 there in revenue. And again, we don't, we don't have any precedent for this, we just don't really have a good number to run with. It depends. So it depends on how, it's always, it's prorated. So, you know, if it was just 20 kids, I mean, 20 kids full-time are in school for 100 days, and then they leave, that's $100,000. But there can be, if they're doing one hour or two hours, and they leave, there's, it's just not, not real straightforward. So...
So far, they have $8,300. For those, I don't know how many...
Statewide?
They're getting about $100.
Okay.
There's maybe about $3 million.
Okay. And so recognizing that, we may have to even up that more, just for consideration. No, yeah, that's good information. There's the AB 483, which is a pay-for-performance bill, which has, initially, I had put money there, but in the guidance memo sent out by former Secretary of Education, DeLaRicaigua, it appears as though we really should not be worrying about it this year. It's a confusing memo, because it lays out that there are things to prepare for, but then it says, basically, "Don't prepare for it." So at this point, I have zero, zero dollars there. There is a lot of change within our, a lot of the full-day K and class size numbers. So full-day K came in with just a 2% roll-up, they gave an extra $20,000 there. Class size reduction was reduced significantly. And part of that is attributed to the change in the ratios that they're using. And part of it also is, they used, they would come up with this, what is the cost of a teacher, or they would fund this cost. And so they actually lowered that from the previous year, what a teacher costs. So the compounding effect of that had a pretty severe negative impact. Although Kinder CSR, we received an extra $174,000. Within the, so there's a now-gifted and talented education grant. Previously, we had $175,000 budgeted. It's within the special education fund, and because of the nature of having transfers between special education and the general fund, they're, it's almost like you can view them as the same thing. So if it's a savings to the special education fund, it's a savings to the general fund. And so since that grant more than covers what we had initially budgeted, we were able to take that cost out. Special education, this year continues with unit funding, so there's an additional $220,000 that we'll see there. SB 405, which I can't remember what, is that the pre-K, Sue? SB 405 is pre-K?
ESL.
ESL, thank you.
The pre-K and the...
Kind of wrapped up into it, okay. So there's two positions from the general fund that can be covered with this grant, so there's some savings there. If, I don't know if you remember, but when we spoke about the budget previously, I really wasn't considering any changes after the school year, as far as staffing concerns. It was kind of, I was trying to lay out what I thought was a worst-case, essentially a worst-case scenario. And so two positions at the high school that were not replaced, I'm taking into account now, Bill Barbie, and then the High Tech Center Coordinator, they've kind of done some other maneuvering there to save $160,000. Our special ed needs have increased, just in the last couple days, really. We have a, we had to hire a new bus driver, a new attendant, a new special ed one-on-one nurse, a new parapro, and a new interpreter, that we will be hiring in the very near future. So there are two things that are not real definite, but could have a large impact. Within SB 515, which is the funding bill, there is money in there specifically to help with programs like Jump Start College. So it's something that could help. We talked about increasing that cost in this year, but it's something that could help offset, more than offset, that cost, and probably absorb some other costs out of the general fund. The Read-By-Three grant, which, and these numbers I'm generating, looking at what the total amounts appropriated were, and then looking at some of the other grants, and on a, like, a percentage basis, prorated basis, how much does Carson usually, or seem to end up with. So that's where these numbers are coming from. So Read-By-Three, we still don't know a lot about, but we know that it's essentially what our SFA program is, so there's a lot of SFA costs that I could absorb out of the general fund. The biggest piece that is an unknown, but would have a tremendous impact, is the health insurance rates. So in the previous two years, we have had an outstanding history of claims, as compared to previous years. So outstanding that it may be possible to actually ask for a reduction in our current health insurance premiums. And that number being, is so big, because when I budgeted, I was budgeting a 10% increase. So really, it's a 15% move in what that cost is. So that is something that we don't know for sure can happen. We meet with our benefits committee tomorrow, and we'll discuss that as an option. But Valerie Clark seems to think that it would be, considering how well we've done, that it would be reasonable to ask for that. We are likely going to get a dental rate pass, so that's not as significant, $10,000, but it is something. And we'll look tonight, but our numbers up at the high school are up at the high school. And so some of the class sizes, being a bit larger, Mrs. Fussan has asked for some prep payouts to add a couple of classes in. And so there are four of those, assuming about $10,000 apiece. So all told, all totaled, that's about one, a little over $1 million. In question marks, I have, and this is really the biggest factor to me, but it's one that we don't, we won't know the answer to for about two more weeks, is what does this new staff look like? We have 90 new people in the district, over 90, I think? Yeah. And so that, you know, whatever that new staff looks like, all their information won't be into our systems, where I can take a look at what the costs will be, what the difference in costs will be, going forward into this year. And so that, that could be a very significant, I don't in any way believe it would increase our costs, it would decrease our costs, but I just don't know the magnitude of that yet. So without knowing that, that little over $1 million expense change, and so that's decreasing expenses by a million. And so when you bring that over to the left as well, it goes from a $2.6 million deficit to a $286 million, or, I'm sorry, $286,000 deficit. to a $286 million, or, I'm sorry, $286,000 deficit. Then based on what's been happening, what was requested by the associations so far that we've met with, trying to get an estimate of what those costs would be, there's a request to add some supplemental money for our library media specialist, kind of being a leader in the district, at about $4,000. More computer site coordinators as we roll out more devices, that there possibly, there would be a need to possibly expand that, at about $10,000. Trying to get something for the time spent by our middle school band and choral teachers, for all the extra time that they put in, and that's at about $6,000. And then, in meeting with admin, it seems that they're interested in, with the extra work that they're doing, getting compensated for extra contract days, since they seem to be putting in so much more time. And that is a very loose ballpark at $39,000 total. One thing that hasn't specifically been requested, but just to throw that in there, so we know the cost, what we're looking at, but a 1% salary increase across all the funds that are impacted by the General Fund, or impacted the General Fund, is about $450,000. So, in total, that would be about $508,000. Now, we haven't met with two of the bargaining groups yet, so I don't know what else there is possibly. But if you take that amount then, and bring that over to the left, that increases the deficit again, close to $800,000. So it's significantly better than the $2.6 million where we started. And it's, like I said, there's, there's just a couple things out there that could be, this is assuming that there is a reduction in the health insurance rate, which is not definite. And again, it's with no knowledge of what staffing costs look like, and staffing costs are more than 80% of our total cost, so any, any swing there can be pretty, pretty dramatic.
Just a moment. Talk to me a little bit about our projected ending fund balance, just for where we at, and so on.
So, starting the school year, we, after the audit, it was, I believe, $11,451,557. And that was, I believe is approximately 19.3% ending fund balance. The, looking at the, the school year, that has just ended the fiscal year, and obviously the audit hasn't taken place yet, but just in my own process of trying to feel where we're ending up, I think we're, we're going to be, I would say, to the pot, will be to the good, to the positive, anywhere from $500,000 to $1 million. So, that would push fund balance closer to 20% ending fund balance.
My question is, if we do the 1% this year, how is that going to affect the budget next year with Race to the Top?
So, you have, you have two massive concerns for next year, and that is taking on Race to the Top into the General Fund. There will still be some Race to the Top money left, but it's dwindling. And then, technology replacement, which is 1.2 to 1.6 million dollars going forward, as long as we fund that. So, any increased cost is going to make that more difficult. It's, I would say, you know, we, looking at next year's budget, you know, we have the chance to plan for that and work with that. Yeah, it's, it's an increased cost, I think, as much as that, you know, means. And anything that, you know, if we do end up running a deficit, in that, if you, if you bring in that 1%, that 1% goes on forever, right? It never goes away. And so, if there is a deficit because of it, that would eat some of that fund balance up. And then, in the next year's budgeting process, you, you do your best to try to, you know, not let that happen, or, you know, at least minimize it.
Thank you, Andrew. So, with that kind of backdrop, the, the teachers did give us kind of a monetary wish list of sorts, without getting to the IBB process. Their first was, and their first concern was these supplementals that Andrew addressed, the lead librarian, the computer technologists, and the middle school band and choral, and that comes up to be ballpark $20,000 per year. They want a salary increase, they have not specified a 1%. We're just estimating, giving you an idea, if they came in with 2%, that would obviously be $900,000. 1% would be $450,000. They want step and column, that has been budgeted, that's about $1.5 million. That traces back to the Evergreen provision, that if you give those in the first quarter, you got to take them away at the end of the first quarter, under the current law. And they've talked about restoring lost or frozen step and column, that would cost about $1.5 million. That's been proposed and passed IBB, and it was always a non-starter. It's something that we just can't do. That was a reduction back then, and a freeze because of the financial conditions at the time. But, that's something that they've brought forward to us, and we want to let you know about that. With that all in mind, and with the looming SB 391, or, excuse me, 241 on Evergreen, what they provided us was a supposal, which I've provided you a copy, it's the last page. And what the supposal essentially is, is, hey, why don't we do a six-month collective bargaining agreement, July 1st through December 31st, so we can do step and column, not run afoul of the legislation that was recently passed, and then jump into negotiations for fiscal '17, but it would actually be the second half of fiscal '16, beginning January 1st, and then negotiate prospectively after closing out a six-month agreement. It's an unusual proposal. I've never seen a six-month collective bargaining agreement in the state of Nevada. It does not track with what your normal fiscal year or your budgeting would be, but it's a creative effort on their behalf to, to try to legally get their step and column move on down the road. And we've listed what the pluses are of that. It accommodates step and column versus no step and column until approved a successor agreement. We've assured them at the bargaining table that it's, we have budgeted these things, and so, whether they're implemented on time or implemented later and retroactive, bottom line, they're going to get their step and column, if they qualify for it. But it accelerates under this supposal idea that they, they're talking about. Obviously morale, they represent that it complies with SB 241, not illegal. We agree that there's nothing illegal about doing a six-month collective bargaining agreement. The minuses is it runs counter to our fiscal year, obviously. We, we're not aware of any other bargaining agreement that is on a six-month basis in this state. The classified contract is one contract that has, that isn't adaptable to this approach completely, because they have employees that get step increases based on their anniversary date when they're hired, and we hire classified employees throughout the year. And so there are a number, there are 26 classified employees that are spread throughout the year, they're not all getting their step increases in this first quarter. Political fallout, possibly, it's obvious, the supposal is obviously a way to get around the new legislation. Does the district want to be the lead of doing that? I mean, that's a, that's, that's not a legal question, that's a really more of a political question. Could there be political fallout from doing that? So what the superintendent and our team has done is looked at alternatives. The second alternative I'll address first, and that is just to continue with collective bargaining as the process goes, they would not get their step and column on time, but we would assure them through a ground rule or whatever, that once we have a successor agreement, we would go back and retroactively implement those step and column movements, or step increases, if it was the classified. Those have all been budgeted, and there's no interest in trying to reduce those or take them back or anything like that. We make that very clear to them. So that's one approach that you can do. Another approach that, that the superintendent is looking at and having AJ look at, is, is there a way to try to roll over on a short term, but it would be a one-year term, the contract, with the only changes being the ones that we negotiate, the non-monetary things that you're aware of? Doing a 1% across-the-board salary increase, a good faith attempt to try to bring salaries up a little bit, to do their step and column on time, and then of course, we're already committed to doing the 1.125% pers adjustment for all employees in the district. And do that as our alternative to the supposal, the six-month supposal. The problem that we've got as a team is, AJ's honestly not at the point where he can say to the board and look you in the eye and say, "We can do it, we can do the 1%." He feels that he may be able to look you in the eye and tell you that in early to mid September, which would allow us to maybe float this, and hopefully the dominos would fall if the money is there, and we could have a one-year agreement with each group. I think that, if we can get to that, that is a better approach than doing a piecemeal six-month approach, trying to address step and column, that they're going to get in any event. It's whether they get it in their October check, or whether they get it maybe in their May check, if negotiations go on that long. So we wanted to sensitize you to that and get your input. Rich, did you have any comments on that approach?
I would just say that traditionally, when we've done something like this, which pay, the step and column piece would actually be considered for the first day of their contract year. So even if it were to go into practice on the 1st of November, the amounts that they would get in their check would cover the times that they've already worked, so it would say retroactive, which is back to the first start of the contract.
And as you know, it is connected with the legal changes.
AJ, do you want to comment on that approach versus a six-month approach, how you, how you view it?
So, the, I, I think part of it is my bias, because it's all I know, is not doing a It's, it seems to me that a, a six-month agreement would complicate, I don't exactly know what that looks like when you are then looking forward and where your increases will happen, and the timing of those things, I mean, they essentially would be happening during the school year, which happens to some extent now, you make things retroactive, but it, it, it's, it seems to be a much cleaner process to me when it runs on that fiscal year. Just when you have, you have those expenses and revenues plotted out, when it's running over fiscal years, the amount of variables, especially with, again, with all the changes, and staffing changes that happen, it, I just, I feel like that would become very, I believe it would be harder to budget that than running just on, on the fiscal years itself.
There isn't any indication, from everything I'm hearing, you're still considering, you know, the longer term than one year.
I, well, I think AJ has told us privately, and I think the superintendent would love to do a multi-year approach if, if the finances were there. Trying to project out this 1% is tough, and trying to project out next year, I think, is even harder.
So, we see it as a benefit to the district, if we keep our flexibility in that.
I, I think there's a greater benefit if we could have a two-year agreement, and the reasoning for that is simply talking about next year and the Race to the Top, and if, if, if I can look at '17 and I know where we are, you know, and what, what those increases, and they're set in stone, and I can run with that. So, by having a one-year agreement, there's some more variables that come back into play I feel, it would be easier to budget if there was a two-year agreement. I think it'd be easier, it'd be easier, I think, for everyone to, if you have those two years locked in, you have two years to go. And then, what's nice is, with the, the change in the legislation, we, we'll be given enough heads up that we can actually start negotiations at an appropriate time, once we get to that next cycle, so we're not feeling kind of this pinch of time.
Are there any thoughts by the board on the two approaches? The, the supposal approach, the six-month approach versus trying to do a, a one-year approach to this?
Six months, if we could get two, would it be better? Would it feel more comfortable?
Is there a reason, are they opposed to two years? Or have we not talked about that at all?
The, the problem is, is they're not going to do a two-year agreement unless there's some promised increase in the second year. And I don't think AJ's at the point where he can...
It's, it's hard, there's still some, some revenue information that's not going to be coming through for the next couple of months, and so it's, with that September 30 deadline, it's just made it really, really difficult. Yeah, it's, it definitely would be preferred, but it's just not, one year is a little clearer than, than two years with the fact that we just don't know where a lot of these things are going to end up with all the legislative changes right now.
Any other comments on that, Rich? The administrators, we began negotiations actually today. They've indicated they've got a fairly short list, but it's all financial. They want to add days to the administrative contracts. They realize that that is not realistic to do this year, that it's something that they want to start discussions on and implement in fiscal 2017. That's why it says fiscal 2017 behind. They, like the teachers, want to get their column movement as soon as they can. They realize that the law precludes that, though, unless we have a collective bargaining agreement by September 30th. They want to also adjust their columns, make them a little broader. Again, they understand that that can't be done this fiscal year with the current financial situation. The nurses in the classified, one of the nurses is out on injury or something, and Jose's been trying to corral both to get them to the table, and we're doing our best to, to get them to the table. One thing I've recommended to Mr. Stokes is that we put out a memo from Mr. Stokes explaining in non-legalese the impacts of some of this legislation on what we can do and what we can't do as far as increases. Assuming we don't have collective bargaining agreements all settled by September 30th, there are 14 employees, 10 classified and four administrators, that have received increases in this first quarter that are going to have to be undone. And nobody likes that, and unfortunately, the legislation did not come out until the end in June, and it'll, it's going to prime the punt for negotiations going forward in future years, but right now, everybody's trying to deal with, trying to scramble and get things done by September 30th, if possible. So, are there any questions or comments on negotiations?
I have a couple. What is behind the request by OCDA to have an arbitrator at IBB?
What, being against it? It's having a mediator, not an arbitrator.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah. No, they're not asking for an arbitrator. I think all of the group...
I guess what I'm asking, have we had a mediator? I guess what I'm asking, have we had a mediator in the past?
Yes. And we've requested dates, and we've got a number of dates today, and we've provided those to all the groups.
I misunderstood you, I thought that was a change.
No.
And then, I just wanted to note that I recognize, first off, our MIB balance has grown a bit for various reasons, but I do agree with you that I'm not sure we've seen anywhere near this many variables when it comes to funding in the school district in all the years that I've paid attention to them. You know, their monetary suggestions are all ones, as we know, that are going to stay in place for a long time. If we agree to them tonight, who knows if we're where we are on the way with our funding and our art and health. The other thing that is starting to worry me more and more, and maybe it comes up in some states that come from years ago, that the effect of losses to students with private institutions, I think, have a much bigger effect than we maybe even can realize right now. I mean, I can see all kinds of approaches by privately funded schools, not just church schools, that I think would change our financial picture. And as I noted, a lot more than being down 82 students at the start of the school year. I guess what I'm saying is, with all these variables, I agree with your concern over blocking and sending more financial commitment, and maybe we can project forward to, that's my opinion.
How about the, when you were explaining the six-month thing, that's where, like, for me, it made a little bit of sense. I understand the budgeting out here, but it seems like on both sides, it, it gives us time to have a much greater understanding of, of what our financial outlook would look like, and then maybe it's a one and a half year after that, or, I don't know. But also, I mean, that could not, that could work not as well for OCDA, wouldn't we find out that maybe, you know, however we hash out the SB 302 and everything else, you know, maybe in six months we find out that we don't, that our funding is, I guess, I'm asking, really, that was a poor term, but it is more complicated, I guess. So we would have a better idea, but it is a goofy contract.
I, I feel, and, and I understand exactly what you're saying, I, I feel like that additional six months, my, my fear is, I should say, an additional fear is, we wrap this up with a six-month contract, and then we're, we essentially just, we're negotiating right away, and then come November, and we still don't have a real clear picture of what's going on. I know it's just, it's such an odd year because of so much happening in the legislature. I would, I would hope that there'd be a lot more guidance and better understanding once we get into the spring as to what that next year, next year would be.
Reality is, it would be a four-month contract.
Yeah. It is just kicking the can down the road.
No, we scratched our heads when they passed it to us, because it, it was novel. As far as we could tell, it was not illegal. I think the superintendent, when he got it, he thought this might make some sense.
I'm trying to figure out, from, it seems to me like it would make more sense, less than minimal.
Well, their initial suppo-, when you read the supposal, it was, they thought that they could also negotiate during that opening, retroactive increases back during the first six months, which you can't. And when, they still want to accelerate and, and get these increases. The step and column is important. We typically have, just for your information, about 35 to 50 column movements, that's across based on education. This year, we've got 65 applications, which is much higher than average. One thing, as, as Mr. Stokes indicated, if A.J. isn't able to look you in the eye and come up with the 1%, because we can't put that on the table with them until we're sure, the fallback may be a six-month, I don't know. There's nothing illegal about it, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, you're going to be kind of chasing your tail, getting the negotiations done, and is the next contract a year and a half, or is it a six, another six-month contract? What is it? So it creates a precedent that maybe you don't want to live with.
Is the tenor of the discussion a possibility this is being in the last few years?
It is.
So we're not seeing any wild cards?
I would, the only thing that, I don't know if this is the right time or not, it seems to me, because maybe it's just not what I see in here, but we have a lot of groups and athletic groups both that are going very far into their seasons, and my understanding is, is when, you know, the coaches and representatives of those teams, they get paid per, say, the season, but then they're going past the season, which required more work on their part, and then literally more time. I don't know if there's room or what it would cost, but I think it'd be neat if they could have opponents or something for making a postseason or, you know what I mean? Yeah, exactly. It is, it's a reward-based system that obviously wouldn't get paid out all the time, but it's saying, we recognize that you put in enough work to grow these students to this point, and it's a reward.
So they beat Bishop Gorman, then they get a double bonus.
Any other questions or any concerns with the direction that we're moving at this
point? Okay. Thank you very much.
I just want to remind you, I want you to know why you're a member of the U.S.
we'll have, right now, Dion lead us in the flag salute.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Stokes, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It's my privilege to be with you this evening, like to welcome our guests and the audience as well. We have some staff and students that we would like to recognize this evening, and here to help me with that are members of the administrative staff of some of the schools. I'd like to first introduce our principal at Empire Elementary, Ms. Evelyn Allred, and she will introduce Mrs. Adrian Wiggins.
Good evening, Mr. Stokes, members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to introduce to you our teacher, Adrian Wiggins, who was selected as a member of the National Math Dream Team. She is the only teacher in Nevada who was selected for that national committee, and she's going to tell you a little bit about that. But before she comes up, I want to let you know that Adrian each year runs a, a club for our math students, and then they participate in the National Noetic Math Competition. And this year, we had one student place in the top 10% of the nation, and four students placed in the top 50% of the nation, and that is all due to Adrian's hard work and dedication to those students. But so you know who they're going up against, there's a long list of students, and most of them are magnet academies, choral academies of science and mathematics, and then it comes down, and it says Empire Elementary, and we're so excited when we see our name up against those, what people think are the big boys. So that shows you, we can compete with the big boys, and that is due to Adrian Wiggins' dedication to our students. So, Adrian Wiggins.
Thank you, members of the board, Mr. Stokes and Ms. Kima. I guess I'm going to tell you a little bit about the dream team, because it's pretty exciting. I, a teacher at my site actually gave me the application and said that she thought I'd be interested, so I put in for it. It was pretty extensive, a lot of work just doing the application, and after I finished, I remember saying to my mom, you know, even if I don't get picked, I learned so much just going through the application process, because we had to do a content knowledge-based assessment to see, do we really understand the content? Then we had to do essays, where we coached teachers based on kind of how they were dealing with students, and then we had to create a video lesson and send that in, so it was, it was quite a bit of work, and I learned a lot. And then, in February, I'm kind of nervous, in February, I received the email, and I actually hadn't told anybody about it, because I just thought, I was kind of doing it as, I just wanted to learn something so that I could be better in my position. And so when I got the letter, that I was one of the 138 teachers in the nation, and over 3,000 teachers that applied, was pretty exciting. So in May, they sent us all down to Washington, D.C., where we had a pretty extensive three-day training, where we worked in collaborative PLCs, we had coaching groups that we worked with, and then we went home for the summer and created a complete K through eight math curriculum that is completely free, online, for any teacher, anywhere to access, if they have internet. It's pretty incredible, and I just feel really fortunate to be a part of that. So, I don't know if you have questions, I don't know if I said everything I wanted to say.
Well, Adrian, you know, that's, you know, what you just, it's pretty impressive what you just said, okay?
Thank you.
And so this curriculum is all online, do you use it at Empire?
Actually, we just are kind of showing it to teachers, they're still trying to finalize and publish, as you can imagine. It was a lot of work this summer trying to get kindergarten all the way through eighth grade, and making sure that it's completely vertically aligned, so that we have that progression from grade to grade. So some of our teachers have started looking at it, we're still finalizing the website, and so stuff is being published daily. It's ready, but it takes, you know, engineers that do the website to get it all kind of live and going, and so some teachers have started pulling it open and kind of using it. There's, it's higher cognitive tasks, which is what we ask for in math, which is really nice, and so the students have the ability to work at a higher level.
Well, okay, then I want to ask Ms. Kima, is this something that we are looking at for the, for the district in all of our elementary grades?
Well, we've assembled a curriculum and assessment team, led by Dr. Medina, Tiara Bubula, and Jackie McCune, and we have our math implementation specialists or coaches that meet, and as, they met today, didn't you? You met today. So I know that they're taking the processes that we learned from our Race to the Top grant with the secondary group, and they're also incorporating those processes in the elementary, but we're certainly going to be taking advantage of looking at what was produced there for our students, of course.
And I think this is pretty impressive that we, no, like, just see it as another exercise with something very meaningful, and it sounds like what you did, you contributed quite a bit to this, and hopefully that comes right back and we put in play here in our district.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concern, comment? Okay.
Just a comment, I just wanted to congratulate you, because I remember when you did the Noetic Challenge at Rich five years ago, and the students at Empire are so lucky to have you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, thank you. In fact-
From Carson High.
Okay, we're good. My name is Tommy Gall. I'm the school board representative at Carson High School. And so I'm pretty much just here to explain what we have going on in the next month or so. So in honor of a student who passed away last weekend from our school, our student council or the entire school will be having a miracle moment tomorrow during our A3 period. We will be asking anybody during A3 to donate whatever change they have to this family to help pay for any unexpected costs that they suddenly have. So it's a sad moment, but we're gonna do our best like student council always does to truly support our families and our students or students' families in their times of need. So on a happier note, our varsity sports kickoff this month and we're all of our sports should have a really good season. Varsity volleyball team leaves this way this Thursday to compete in a tournament in Las Vegas. And they have also been invited to compete in a tournament in Arizona in October. And so they should have a great season with a lot of returning seniors. Varsity boys and girls tennis have their first match 3:00 p.m. in Spanish Springs on Thursday, August 27th. Boys play at Carson High and the girls play at Spanish Springs. Varsity girls soccer played their first game on the 27th of August against South Tahoe. The game will be at 5:00 p.m. at Carson High. Cross Country, who has done very well in years past, will be have their first meet on Friday, August 28th at Lambeau Park. And the varsity football team, which has serious hope for a state title this year, they're kicking off their kicking off the year against Reed High School on this Saturday, August 29th. And we're extremely excited to watch the boys play at Mackey Stadium at UNR. So that's gonna be really cool. And girl girls golf starts their season with a tournament at Eagle Valley Golf Course on Monday, August 31st. And student council is also extremely excited about all of our other events coming up. As a senior, I'm especially excited for senior sunrise this Friday, August 28th. It's kind of the kickoff for seniors to get excited about the final year of high school and really start it off the right way. The high school club fair is Tuesday, September 8th, and I don't know much details about this yet. Our we won't have school on September 7th because of Labor Day. September 14th will be our first early release. That night NHS will be having an induction ceremony to honor students who have had outstanding academic records as well. Tuesday, September 15th, there will be a freshman parent night. This is opportunity. This is the night parents have the opportunity to understand what their students at our high school are doing and the wonderful opportunities that they have at our high school. Homecoming week is gonna be the week of September 21st, and our theme is underwear, like as in under the bed or the stars or the lights. We'll be having dress up days such as under the bed, we'll dress up like pajamas or dress up as monsters from Monsters, Inc. or something like that. Our football game is Friday, that Friday against HOG at 7:00, and our dance is Saturday at 7:00. And this year's student council, we have really great hopes for it. It should be the best council we've had in a while. So we're really excited about that. So thank you, board.
And your name from the Pioneer?
Kaylee.
Kaylee. Okay. Okay, your last name?
Farrika.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. President, the members of the board. We would like to take this moment to welcome back all the trustees and we are looking forward and looking forward to another great year at Pioneer. We would also like to welcome some new faces to the Pioneer family. Rebecca Allen will join us as an ESL teacher. Kathleen Gregovich is our school psychologist. Paul Lorian is our new art and BIP teacher. And Shannon Archer will be joining us soon to be our Carson Online Assistant. Pioneer will be hosting an open house September 16th. And Pioneer High School Leadership will be sponsoring a blood drive on September 10th. This summer, we sold our shortage sheds and a couple of dog houses that our construction class made last year, but we will have a few dog houses left. And you can call us and we can make a great deal. And thank you. This concludes all the events and activities at Pioneer.
Steve? Stacy?
Empire is having their open house tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:30. And I just got back from Chicago from the National Summer Leadership Conference for the National School Board. And it was really interesting. Have a lot of good speakers. One of them was the guy that authored the 50 myths of public education. And another one from Texter. And so I mean, now that I'm back, I just got back yesterday, so I haven't had time. But I will email everybody all the PowerPoints that they allowed us to see, so you guys can kind of see what else went on. So it was a good meeting.
Okay, just make it brief. Both schools, Mark Twain and Boarderwick, are off and running. Mark Twain's bursting at the seams. And both schools wanted me just to recommend that anybody watching or in the audience, if you want to stay up on their current events, to go to their school calendars on our school district website. And it's a good way to get to know the website and get most current information on the school calendars. And Mark Twain wanted to make note that back to school night is Thursday, August 27th.
Hello? For Fritsch Elementary, September 1st is the first grade parent night. And it is also the PTA Ice Cream Social. And the PTA will be providing, they'll be watching supervising children on the playground for the first grade parent night. And also Fritsch would like to welcome the new principal, Dan Brown, and congratulate Assistant Principal Mike Walker on his new position within the Department of Education and wish him all the best.
Joe?
I don't have a report for Carson Middle School, but Carson High, the Carson High Library Digitarium or Carson City Library Digitarium internship, they have a paid position for anybody who's 15 years or older and is available between 3:00 and 6:00, Monday to Friday. And if you'd like some information about it, you can get info from Mr. Goslin in the Carson High Career Center, Room 104. And then I just wanted to congratulate Tommy Gall for joining us here and let everybody know that there's a senior class representative position open. And applications are accepted until Tuesday, September 1st. And you can see Mrs. Britt in the leadership room.
I've got two two items. Lee Connolly did from Eagle Valley did send me a report to be read into the record tonight. And I left it at home. So next week, but I want to let you know, Lee is, he's right on this one. And then I also want to recognize Mr. Green. On Saturday night, he was inducted into the Carson High Football Hall of Fame. I attended the dinner and celebration. And just to let you know, he made a great, and I heard this from a lot of people, his presentation, he turned around and talked to the kids on stage, the football players. And very moving what he did. And so Ryan, I just wanted to recognize you and thank you for that. You know, one item here, in the last couple of weeks, we've had two tragedies here. First with Deputy Carl Howell. And then most recently with Cameron St. Hillary. Something I know as a board, we send our condolences, our prayers go to both families. But it's something that all of us should just take time to reflect of how quickly life can change. So just be thankful for the day. Anyway, with that, association reports? Agenda item number eight, which is public comment. For any item that is not on the agenda, if any one of the audience wants to come forward and have a good time, just step up right to the, right up to the mic. And seeing none. Going to agenda item number nine, informational update of the 2014-15 ACT test results in the Carson City School District. And Dr. Ricky Medina?
Good evening, members of the board. I have to talk with Mr. Stokes about the scheduling again. He always schedules me after the amazing folks and students that we have working in our school district. So it's a tough act to follow. Tonight, we're gonna talk about the 2014-15 ACT results. Last year was the first year that we tested all of our 11th graders. So basically in my presentation, I'm gonna talk about where we were, kind of where we are now. And then I'll have Mrs. Fuzon and Mr. Zona come up and help me talk about where we're going. So to start off with, in the past, we had what were called the high school proficiency exams. And on this slide, I have question marks and I have graduate in 10th grade kind of marked in red. And it looks confusing. Ms. Kima came into my office and was like, what in the world do you mean with this? And that's basically how people felt at the state level about the high school proficiency exams. They were graduate exit exams, but they were given to students in the 10th grade, starting in the 10th grade. So it kind of created a conundrum. For those kids that passed in the 10th grade, it's saying that they're proficient. So does that mean that they don't need to take 11th and 12th grade courses? For the students that didn't pass, it often meant that instead of taking 11th and 12th grade coursework, they now took high school proficiency classes or more remedial 9th and 10th grade work so that they could prepare for the high school proficiencies. So oftentimes, students would get to the end of the road, they graduated seniors, and they haven't had the 11th and 12th grade coursework that they needed in order to be college and career ready. So a couple of things happened last year. The first thing that happened was these high school proficiency exams were replaced with end of course exams. And the philosophy with the end of course exams was we don't want to have a course at the end of the high school career that tells us where kids deficiencies are, because by then it's too late. So the approach taken by the state was we will offer Math 1 and Math 2, which basically translate to Algebra 1 and Geometry 1. We'll have end of course test exams in those subjects, which are usually 9th or 10th grade courses. The same thing with English 1 and English 2. So that way, if there are deficiencies, we could go after those right away. So that way, the kid's 11th grade year, they could start taking 11th and 12th grade coursework like they should be. However, by giving it during the 9th and freshman and sophomore years, you're kind of breaking one of the rules that came about as a result of No Child Left Behind that said you had to test in the 11th and 12th grade. So the state needed an accountability test in order to report data to the feds. To do that, they implemented what was referred to as the College and Career Readiness Test, or the ACT. So historically in our district, students that were college bound were the ones that typically took the ACT. Oftentimes, they took it in their both their 11th and their 12th grade years, because you could take the tests multiple times. The state needed this for the accountability measure. So but they didn't need to set a passing score for it, because this was a baseline year. So they only counted participation. And this test is different, I want to point out that it's different than some of our other tests that we take kind of from the start. Like our other tests, it's a curriculum based measure of college readiness. So it's based on kind of some standards that kids would be expected to hit in high school. It tests achievement in English, math, science, and writing, similar to our HSPEs. But in addition to kind of that academic component, there's some other components of the test that are a little bit different. With all of our other assessments, I report to the state, I say, these are the kids' names, their date of birth, their grade levels, yada, yada, yada. The state slaps out on their test. So when the kids go in, they start bubbling in their answers. With the ACTs, there's some things that are asked before the kids take the exam. And it was originally, it was supposed to take about an hour. But we found out in our district and our surrounding districts, it took a little bit longer than that. Because students are asked, given basically a survey that asks high school grade and course information. So it asks, what math class are you currently in? Do you plan on taking this math class? By the time you graduate, how many courses of math will you have completed? Will you have taken chemistry, biology, and physics? There's also a student profile section, which asks things like, what was your parents' income last year before taxes? What are your plans when you go to college? Are you gonna go full time or part time? And there's also a career interest inventory, where it asks you, you know, do you like to build a birdhouse? Kind of yes or no, those types of questions. This section of the exam kind of threw some of our students for a loop. And it threw us at the kind of the site level as well at the district level for a loop, because we kind of weren't expecting this. This was something new. But it's something that we now know to plan for going forward. On the ACT exam, each of the four sections is benchmarked against a corresponding college class. So for instance, the English portion of the test is mapped over to English composition. So what your English course you would take generally your freshman year of college. If you score an 18 on the ACT in the English section, that means that you have a 50% chance of getting a B or a 75% chance of obtaining a C or higher in the corresponding college course. And they lay out these benchmark scores for each of the four assessments. I want to point out that these benchmarks, there's not benchmarks for 11th graders and 12th graders and students that return back to school after joining the workforce for a few years. These are the benchmarks for all of those students. So if you're an 11th grader and you take the exam and you don't meet the benchmarks this year, those students still have their 12th grade year to kind of take additional coursework to get their score up to this benchmark. So in years past, the way that the test was taken and the way that the data was reported to us was by the graduating class. So the most recent data before this year that we have is for the graduating class of 2014. I want to point out on this slide, there were only 114 students from the class of 14 that took this assessment as 11th or 12th graders. In English, so the benchmark was 18. Of these 114 students, 71% of those students were above that benchmark of 18, that score of 18 on the ACT. Statewide, 65% of kids were meeting that, meeting that benchmark. For math, I won't read off the numbers to you, but for all four subjects, of those 114 students, 39% met the benchmark in all four subjects and 26% statewide. So that's where we were with the graduating class of 2014. So last year, we jumped from 114 students taking the test to 529 students, which is basically every student in our school district except for a handful of kids. Here, the numbers are a lot different than what they were with the graduating class. They're a lot lower. So for Carson City, 33% of our kids were at that benchmark for English. Statewide, 35%. So English was the only subject where we did lower than the state average. For mathematics, 23%, the state 20. Reading, 25%, the state 23. For science, 18% met the benchmark, statewide 16. Where we get down to all four, with our college going crowd, we were at 39% of kids meeting the benchmark. When we tested all of our students, we're now down to 12%. So I'm leaving on here for just for a second, because I want you to to know that we know that the scores are low and not where they should be.
This is also 11th graders versus 12th graders, correct?
Yeah, so this right here, when they report the graduating class of 2014, they take whatever score is the highest. So if I'm in a student and I've taken the ACT three times, this would reflect my highest score as well as so for most kids, that would be their senior year that they took it. So if they didn't take it their senior year, it would be junior scores, but if they did, it's the highest.
And out of the 114 out of the student body, those are people that were probably going to college, college prep and took it to for entrance.
Correct. Okay, so this slide requires a little bit of explanation. So for the ACT Corporation, they recommend that students take what they call the core or more college curriculum. And basically what their core or more college curriculum is, is for English, it's four credits of English. It's three credits of math, but though they have to include Algebra 1, Geometry, and Algebra 2. It's three years of science, which includes biology, physics, and chemistry, and three years of social studies. So of that core, and these figures are self-reported figures. So on my next slide, I'm gonna show you that some of the work of the district is to make sure that the kids made the right selections, because there's some of these, like English, all of our kids, it's a graduation requirement that they take four years of English. So every student should have marked that they were taking that full curriculum. So part of our work as a district will be to go back and match the student test scores up with the actual scores. But what's telling from this data, even with it being self-reported, 241 of our students enrolled in core or more classes. 269 put that they were taking less than the core. Of those core or more, those are the percent of kids that met their benchmark score. So the students that self-identified that they were taking specific kind of English, math, and science courses ended up with much higher scores than the students that didn't. Questions about this? So when we start talking about next steps, so as a district, for me, the data's horrible. But when I look at the data, I look at it in terms of opportunity. This is the first time that we've had data that we're able to look at kind of schoolwide. Even with the HISP data, it was difficult, because sometimes you had kids that passed it in the 10th grade, sometimes kids that passed it in 11th grade. This, we could look at our 11th graders and we could match these scores up with the the students' course-taking patterns and their grade-taking patterns. So as a district, a next step is to match that data up, find out which ones of these courses are having the greatest or the least impact on these student scores. So we can make sure that we're getting students into the right pathways. And the pathways that need kind of fixing, we could provide them with information on how to do that. In addition to that, ACT kind of provides recommendations, they provided recommendations in their report that they provided to us. And I'll read off kind of these recommendations and then I'll bring Jason and Tash up to kind of share some of the things that they're already working on at their site and things that they plan to do. The first bullet, we're already doing that, because we're testing all of our 11th graders. So we're going, we're providing access to all of our students to give us that full picture. I mean, it was nice when the results were really high, when we were only testing a handful of kids. But at the same time, it wasn't giving us the full picture of what was going on. This next two bullets are kind of tied together, making the ACT core curriculum a priority and making sure that students are taking the right courses. The fourth bullet is, once students are in the right courses, making sure that those courses are the right rigor. So if it's an Algebra 1 course, make sure you're teaching Algebra 1. And the last one is kind of planning guidance activities on students' career and college aspirations. And this last one, that was one of the reasons why I pointed out some of these other components of the exam. Those 114 kids that took the exam, they were prepared to put in their high school course information and to do the student profile section. Many of our other students that weren't, kind of don't have it yet in their mindset that they're college-bound weren't prepared to answer those sections.
Dr. Medina, do you know how we related to other counties around here? Is that data available?
Unfortunately, at this time, I know how we related to the state. But we just got the data, it was interesting the way the data was released. So late May, early June, students got their individual profiles. And then at the beginning of July, or no, the beginning or end of July, the state board got shared preliminary results, which showed up in the newspaper. And then the district, we just got our results last week. So yeah, no, I know that like Story County, they're releasing their data to their board September 2nd. And I'm not sure, I haven't had time with the opening of the school year to get with the other districts.
Okay, Ricky, now, we can start the discussion now. You, okay, what you indicated here, this is probably not acceptable. You know, this is, okay, our first timeout. But the ACT is really assessing what have the students learned? Because you mentioned the words, those magic words, college and career at the beginning. So what this first timeout has shown in many ways, to those not going any further, is the fact that we didn't do a good job in, if we're truly gonna look at college and career readiness. The second part of that is, you know, you go back to the year before, the 114 students. If you're going to college, you mentioned it, you might take this three times. You're going for that, that high mark, which means that you're always preparing. You know, there's online courses for ACT preparedness or taking a test or actual in-person. My question is, we, we get up, we knew, we knew this going in, this is the first year. Did we prepare any of our students? You indicated that most were not, many were not prepared. Did we just say, you're on your own, you know, to go in and here? And I, I say that in a sense that, you know, they're getting results back individually that probably is not a great reflection, you know, thinking, well, maybe I didn't do enough. Or didn't, maybe I didn't, you know, wasn't exposed to the right learning. Well, maybe they were, but we didn't have that review, we didn't have that prep period to give them a chance. And did we as a district do anything to help these kids?
Well, I want to, I want you all to answer, but I want to answer kind of the logistical piece, because there were some things that we could do better now, that we couldn't do better before. So at the beginning of the year last year, we weren't sure what tests we were going to be giving our students at the end of the year. We didn't know if it was the ACT exam, we didn't know if it was the smarter balanced exam. And so we didn't know which exam we were even going to give. The process for the ACT is different than all of our state assessments. With most of our state assessments, the vendors work with the individual districts. With the ACT, the vendors worked with individual sites. And there wasn't, there were, this testing all the 11th graders was a new thing for the ACT Corporation. the ACT Corporation as well. Because like, with the first part of that test, for kids that are college-bound, it's an hour-long process to fill out that survey. Kids get through that, and they're ready to take the test. With students that, with, when you're testing all of the 11th graders, that process went from an hour, to for many kids, it was a three-hour process. They didn't have access to that material, they didn't know, and we didn't know to ask them that going in, because we didn't have access to those materials till we got the test.
Well, you said it's an opportunity, so I'm, I, Tash and Jason, I'm sure are going to provide us some insight in that opportunity. So, okay, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
So I just had, I had a couple questions about the data. So, I think I remember reading on the statewide, and one of the questions that they asked the students is, you know, "Do you plan to go to college?" And are you, do you want to go to, there's some, I don't know exactly how their question is, is worded, and I think I read that it was something like 82% of the students answered in the affirmative, "I'm going to college." And so what that really tells me, and I don't know if there's district-by-district data for that, and whether our students were the same, but there seems to be a disconnect, slightly, about where, where students think they're going, and what they think they're going to do. And I think that's really something in the data that I think we should look at. I mean, I'm sure you all will look at that, but that was something that really struck me, is that we have a lot of students that think that they're ready to go to college, or that they're career-ready, and maybe this assessment is not showing that, at least to the extent that we think we're going to go to college and get a B 50% of the time and a C 75% of the time. So that was, kind of, one thing that I saw that struck me in the data, that's a little bit more outside the box, I guess.
Yeah, and we did get that data, and that's part of mapping it back, linking that data with the courses that students are taking and what their grades are, so that we could get a feel for what those perceptions are.
Right. And so this, the second thing is, from the 2014 graduates, those are students that graduated in 2014, but they could have taken the, the ACT when they were in the 11th grade.
Correct.
So it's, it's just that they graduated in 2014, and if they were actually going to college, they likely took it in the 11th grade. So I think there is some comparison there. You know, obviously, they were college-bound and taking the ACT on their own in the 11th grade versus a whole slew of kids who, you know, aren't sure about that. So that's one point also with, kind of, the comparison. And then the final thing, and this is just my overall feeling about the test, I think it's important, and it's a good benchmark, and I think that the, making the ACT core curriculum a priority is what I would not like to see happen. I do not want, and, and this is my personal opinion, and this is how I feel about all these tests that are being put on us. And, I mean, trust me, I value test, I mean, my son's probably over-tested, but, and I, and I actually am interested in data, but every time we do something like this, we change to preparing our kids to succeed at that test. And I know, I'm preaching to the choir probably in this room, but, you know, I, I would like us to start thinking about what else we're doing here other than preparing them to take a test, and that's just my little soapbox thing.
Is it Ryan?
Can I speak to that?
Who's first? Okay, Ryan?
Mr. Medina, if it's okay, unless you're really not.
Oh, sure, I just wanted to respond to Mrs. Contine's statement, and I think when this speaks to, I just want to make sure it's clear, when this speaks to core curriculum, what they're referring to really is the, the classes that the students take when they're in high school. So they, in, in order to be prepared, according to the data from ACT, our students should be really taking algebra in 8th grade, and then taking geometry, Algebra II, and trig pre-calc to be successful, when they look at the data. So it's not necessarily changing the curriculum content of what we're teaching, it's how we're aligning those courses. So I just wanted to make that, kind of, understood.
And the other thing to add, we're going to be doing the, the ACT for the next couple of years. So last year, it wasn't clear, at the beginning of the year, we weren't sure if it was a one-time thing, was kind of, do this to get it over with, and then the legislature will decide if we keep it or do something new the following year. So there will be some consistency, at least for the, the next couple of years.
All right, well, I guess we'll skip down while, while we're on that, because I had jotted down, are we focusing on student achievement and success, or, or just looking for the paper? You know, when we're talking about changing our coursework. Now, I understand that maybe we aren't putting them in the right courses at the right time, that, that makes some sense. But I think that we've done a really good job here of developing a strategic plan, and recognizing that not every, a very small percentage of our students are going to go to college. And then now, we're using benchmark data from an exam that, that measured college readiness, that's what we're looking at. It's not career readiness. If, if the benchmark is what grades they'll get in college, then it seems to me that it, it's really counterproductive to everything we've done in the last few years, with the exception for the students that obviously are on that track. So that's just a thought with that, but I have a couple of questions. My first question, we just, we just passed a wellness policy that has a social-emotional wellness section in it. When we're, and I realize that this is, we don't have a choice, all of our children have to take the ACT, but are we hurting more children by having them fail a test and making them not feel good about themselves than we're helping the few that are going to college?
Can I speak to that?
Thank you. It, it was a shocker at our school. We had, two years ago, we had one student take the ACT who planned on going. We had one person take the SAT, and last year, we had 45 of 47. They were not happy. A lot of students knew what was being measured, and some walked out. It was just, it was a perception issue, and I think we can do a better job of selling that to the parents and, and to the students. We are afraid to show the scores to some of the kids, because we don't want to destroy them, yet at the same time, we know we can do a better job. So I think there's some value in it, but there's also, it, it may not be the most appropriate assessment of our kids, you, forcing them to do the ACT, so.
Hold on, and if I could, because I sat in a meeting today with leaders throughout our community from manufacturing and industry, and one of the things that they stressed at the meeting was when we're talking college and career readiness, that it's "and," that kids have to be ready for college and a career when they leave school, that it's not college or career readiness. And so even though these kids are going to college, there's a career at the end of that pathway. So, yeah, I would be remiss if I said that it wasn't, we, we weren't, didn't have to prepare our kids for college and career readiness.
My other question is, what is our plan about the demographic section? Because I, we've, we talked about this with some of the other national tests that we did earlier. I personally feel it's completely inappropriate to force all the kids into a section and answer demographic questions about their family life and their social situations, especially without their parents' awareness, or allowing, their parents should be filling out that section, if, if that's what it comes down to, or at least be aware of that. So what is our plan?
Yeah, for that, we'd have to take direction from the state.
Just a question that I'm thinking about, because if the students, when they were taking the high school proficiency exam, they knew that if they didn't pass, they wouldn't be able to walk at graduation. And the state, Nevada, only counted participation in the ACT. Did the students know that going into the test? Because I think that can affect their, not to discredit anything, but I think if a student knows this test doesn't count for anything, they care quite a bit less about it. And then, I just worry about testing fatigue. If, if, if we get to the point that maybe the kids are just, they're just going to not count tests, that they don't care about tests that don't count for anything.
And to answer your first question, I think statewide, we tried to keep it under wraps, that it only counted for participation. I mean, there were some schools and districts that were telling kids that it counted for more, but kids watched the news, they read the newspaper, they knew that it only counted for participation.
I, I just want to reiterate that, because some of our kids knew that, and that spread, and, and so their, you know, enthusiasm to finish that exam and really was not there. So I don't know that we have a real true value of, of what our kids know yet on that. We, we have a lot of information on the four bullets, we, we got them there. It was 95.7% took the test, but there's, there's a lot going on, but when they know it, it really means something, and we can really mark to the parents, I think that'll be a different result.
So I have a few questions, but my first question, Ricky, is, are other tests, are other states doing this ACT test, and how do we compare outside the state?
Yeah, so the answer is yes, there are other states that are doing it, but we're not sure the state, there's not a mechanism yet to release all the state results. So I've only seen Nevada results, except what was in the newspaper.
Okay.
So as those, I imagine that as states publish those results, they'll be more readily available. But out, right now, like, we're not even, the state won't release any of our test results until either September 15th or October 15th. So we're, kind of, a month ahead.
One thing we do know is not all states test an entire grade level. They still use that method that we used to use, where college-bound students on their own take the test.
Okay. No, and, and I mean, that makes some sense, but, you know, when, when we look at this, no matter what, you know, when we talk about some kids, that, you know, they don't, they don't take the test serious, or whatever excuse, I shouldn't use the word "excuse," but whatever item we decide to use, the fact is, all districts all throughout the state probably have the same kids, generally speaking, some take it seriously, some don't. And the end result is, I mean, like you said, you know, we're certainly not proud of these test scores, and we want to see what we can do to improve them. But I, and I think we, we have to look at, we're doing it to a degree, but we, we really have to look even out of the box on how we're preparing these kids, and aligning courses and whatnot makes a lot of sense to me. We're not there yet, but it seems like we're always chasing something. We, we say we're going to do something, and we almost get there, and then we have to change something, and then we almost get there. And I look at these parents, you know, we heard before how there's, we budgeted so much money for these kids, you know, who, that savings account for private schools, and, you know, when I have parents come to me and say, "Why should I keep my kid in the district?" When I see test results like this, you know, I need to be able to give them some kind of logical answer that says, "Oh, no, 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 you should stay in the school district." And so I think we really have to find a way to, to work hard to improve these grades, and, and I think we have some of the right systems in place and the right people in place, but we've got to somehow find a way to get to the next level. We seem to keep hovering just below where we want to get to. And I'm hoping we get there. One of the things I heard almost four years ago, when we first got the Race to the Top grant, was we had 80% of our seniors who were attending, starting college, and needed remediation. And the goal was, after four years, to flop that, to where only 20% needed remediation. So one of the questions I asked a few months ago was, three years later, where are we? And we don't really have a good feel for where we are at this point yet. So again, I feel like we, we keep chasing, but we never keep, we never seem to get there. And, and I, I'm not really criticizing, I'm just saying, you know, I need some help understanding how, how do we get there, and when are we going to get there? You know, when are we going to see a jump to that next level?
Yeah, and I think some of these bullets, is, the two principles address them, they'll answer some of those questions.
Okay. I, I think, and you guys have heard from me about, two, three weeks ago, or the, a couple weeks ago, about the plans that we have for Carson High School this upcoming year. I think one of the main things that I know will get us there is really looking at the course alignment that we've had at our school. ACT test scores, one thing I want to point out, too, is just know that that 114 kids is not all of our college-ready kids. It's only the kids who take the ACT. Many students take the SAT, because it depends on the, the school that they're going to go to and what they require. So I would hate for anybody to think there's only 114 Carson High School students who think they're college-ready, because that would not be accurate. But that being said, we know that one of the things that they, they specifically talk about is when they look at the data and they compare students, and how the students who are doing well on the ACT, those students, as I said before, are taking algebra typically in 8th grade, and they're taking geometry, Algebra II, and trig pre-calc minimally at the high school. This year's senior class, last year's junior class, that it talked about the data that we have, they were not required to have the four years of math, the three years of science. So this year's junior class is the first class that was required to have those additional courses. So I think that will make a difference on our test scores this year, right away. Beyond that, as you all know, we've also, at Carson High School, done away with Algebra I-A, I-B. And so again, the senior class, several of these students had Algebra I-A in 8th grade, Algebra I-B in 10th grade, geometry in 11th grade, and they were taking that test, and testing against kids across the country who'd taken trig and pre-calc at the same time. We're not going to get them there if we don't push them in the more rigorous courses. So we've completed those, we relined science, we relined math, we look at, we looked at our English department, and what was being taught in each of those levels. I think the Race to the Top work that we've been going through in the past two years in terms of the level of rigor in each of those courses, in addition to the fact that we're putting them in the right courses, now we're also looking at the level of rigor. So this year, the work that we're going to be focusing on with Mastery Connect, we're going to be able to have that data, so our teachers can actually look at who's performing and who's not. The other thing that we did, this is the first year that we have those seniors, so this, this class that we're talking about that doesn't have lovely test scores, they are sitting in math 095 and, 095, 098, and English, excuse me, math 095, 096, and English 095, 098, which will help them when they go to Western Nevada. The bulk of our kids, we know, about 90% of our students who go on to Nevada schools go to Western Nevada, and they will automatically not go into remedial courses. And we have about 86 students participating out of the senior class in that. So it's going to be huge, again, in terms of decreasing the number of students who need remediation at that level, so that will, I think we'll see, again, the data much different. The other thing is, with the guidance activities, with the, it was very interesting, honestly. We had planned, luckily, we have 90-minute block periods, because we thought, "Oh, an hour, no problem." We looked through the materials as much as we could, and we didn't get them that far in advance, and we prepped our teachers, but when the kids got in there to take it, obviously, we were surprised at how little the students knew about the things that they were being asked about. I mean, it makes sense now, when you look in hindsight, but I think this year, part of what we need to do is inform our parents. We've now been through the process, this is what our kids need to be able to either report, and/or they can choose not to report it. So if there's a question that they don't want to answer, they're not required to, they can skip it. But the other thing is making sure that they have transcripts available. When I looked at the numbers that Dr. Medina put up, with over half of our kids reporting that they haven't taken core, the core number of classes, that is simply that I don't think they understood the question when they were filling it out. And now we know, we can tell our teachers to remind them, "No, you have to have four years of English to graduate. It's a requirement, so everyone needs to be answering yes on that." And also, you're taking your math, and you're taking your science and filling in those courses. The other thing is, is when you're plugging in your coursework, is if, if they didn't take the right classes, then they didn't count in that core. What I mean by that is, like, for science, it asks, "Did you take biochem, physics?" As Dr. Medina said. Well, if the student didn't take courses that they associated with that, maybe they sat in an oceanography class but didn't report that as science, then those numbers came out incorrect as well. So I'm very hesitant to look at the data they provided, they, ACT provided the data that the kids filled in and bubbled in, but how accurate it is, is a completely different question. So we are going to train our kids on that. The other thing we're going to do is take the results from this assessment, which is going to be very beneficial to our kids, and have our senior English 095, 098 teacher, and our math 095, 096 teacher work with the kids, really, on how do you read your test scores, what do you need to work on, and let's build that capacity. So we're going to have you retake that ACT again, it's not okay just to take it once, take it a second time, and then those scores will go up. We know, truly and honestly, that simply that the, the effort of taking the test and going through that process, and then taking it a second time, student scores automatically go up, even if they haven't done anything else. Just having the exposure and the experience to that, and doing it a second time will help as well. So I think we're going to see results immediately, truly and honestly, next year at this time, when we come back and look at the class, and the difference between that, this year's senior class and next year's seniors' class will be huge. So, sure.
Just, I just, just regarding, somebody mentioned test fatigue, and I know it's something we can't do anything about, because most of these tests aren't, we don't decide the kids have to take these tests. But when we were talking... But when we were talking about the school calendar and Mr. Dolly came up here and we were, you know, hashing out, among other things, personal questions, but we were also talking about the amount of testing and all this. And every time we take one of these tests, we lose a day of teaching. And the kids that aren't taking this test, for the most part, aren't at school or they're not, you know, they're at home, they get a late start, those kinds of things. So we're, we're not shooting ourselves in the foot, but the system is shooting us, all kids, in the foot because we're losing these, these teaching days. Out of 180 required days, we know we're really only starting at 178, and then we just keep going down from there. And so I've just, however we do this, I would love to find a way to increase the amount of teaching time and stop decreasing the amount.
I absolutely agree with you. And I can tell you, one thing that we did go to the table on with the ACT specifically is requesting that they move the test date. The month of May was brutal for our staff and for our kids last year, quite honestly. Half the juniors who took that test, took proficiencies within like a two-week timeframe of taking that ACT test as well. I mean, it's, it's really difficult to ask kids to do that and put all of their effort into it. So we did change the ACT test date for this year, which hopefully will help as well.
Be March 1st.
So at least it's not in the April, May window. So hopefully that will decrease some of that fatigue, but I absolutely agree with you. It's brutal and our teachers feel that as well, just the, the need to try to finish their curriculum and be through with it by April so that we can test the whole month of May is, it seems counterintuitive to making sure that our kids are ready for college and careers.
I guess, well, it sounds like a lot of us are thinking the same thing. Realigning when the courses are taken is probably a good thing, but I, I hope that we don't have a knee-jerk reaction to this and it sounds like you guys are being thoughtful about it. And I think stay the course. We have to be confident and lead in, in, in our plan and what we've been implementing and stay supportive of our teachers and staff who've worked diligently to put it in and not take one mandated test and fall off our course. So I hope we're all on the same page there and I think we are. Thank you.
Just to add a couple of things at Pioneer, you know, we, the first bullet was the access part, so we got that down. The core curriculum, making that a priority, some of the things we do already right now in place would be adding core sections to our master schedule. So we did that. We have a shorter class time, we have all the classes every day, and so what that does for us is it gives about 1,080 minutes of extra above the minimum class time for instruction per year, per class. So we did that in our schedule. We have a longer summer school for finishing up core classes. We also have a credit recovery built into the master schedule. As far as making sure the kids are in the right classes, we do that by hand at Pioneer. We're able to do that and schedule them by hand. We use transcripts, assessment grades, and credits. Support classes are also added. If you have trouble in math, you get an extra math class instead of an elective. So that's already built in. As far as the rigor of the courses, that has been a lot of work done and that was done last year by the ISs and Race to the Top, and we really appreciate that work because now you're going to see that implemented, I think 100%, close to it. For guidance activities, we will continue to expose them to career cruising, which we had about 90% were exposed to that. We have WNC tours and we're utilizing our JAG program to expose them to career options. So that's what we're doing at Pioneer. Thank you.
I just would like to make one last comment. Actually, really appreciate, want to say that I appreciate all of you and how you're looking at these test scores too. It always concerns me as a principal, right, looking at scores that we know aren't where we want them to be. We know that. I don't think you can ignore them, but I also think, as you've all stated, we really need to stay the course and know that the work that we're doing right now is going to eventually get the scores that we want, as long as we're not constantly ebbing and flowing and changing and constantly trying to react. I think truly and honestly, I believe strongly that within the next year or two, we're just going to see that naturally, organically go up because of the work that we're doing and I think we're on the right path. So thank you for acknowledging that, I appreciate it.
And I, I think what, I think what I'm seeing is the same thing we've seen every time we see a major change in whatever's being tested, you know, your, your response, you're responding to a test. And I guess my expectation as a trustee is some of the things we've heard here, you know, what should be our view or the response to this change? What are the things that we should get from it and what are the things that we shouldn't maybe, you know, take too seriously? And the thing that I am looking forward to hearing is kind of two things as we talk about rigor and, you know, curriculum alignment and such like, course alignment, excuse me, and such things like that. You know, I mean, basically I want to know that if we're teaching Algebra I to the students, that we're teaching, you know, the whole Algebra I class is being taught to the level that it's supposed to and that when they're taking their end of course and we determining who passes that course or not, we're hearing some of the things that we heard a couple of months ago, the results for the work that we've done in mathematics and Algebra I, we've got a 20% increase in the number of kids that are passing that course. I mean, if you're saying that, okay, maybe the Algebra I rigor isn't where it should be, then that's a concern. But if we're showing this in these different important courses, then I'm not too sure how much I am all that concerned about whether the state throws a new test. Yes, it's a public relations hiccup, so to speak, but Doug Donat, if, if the work we're doing is going to be showing us the increase in passing the courses at the course level that they need for college, then, you know, I feel we're getting, we're doing a good job in that point. So anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Well, don't go away. You know, certainly, and Tashi, we talked about this when you made your presentation here about a month ago. With the Race to the Top, with the learning guides, the self-assessment, things are changing. That, that whole, you know, just the atmosphere of how we learn in academic subjects is changing and we have the assessment tools to do it now and not let a kid fail. So certainly, and I even made the statement that next year, even though you didn't have the ACT scores, we'd have a greater level of achievement. I take the ACT though as not taking another test. The ACT is, you know, it's testing to standards and these standards are clearly laid out in English, math, science, you know, and writing. Those are clearly laid out standards and that is something that our students need to know going forward for college and career readiness. So I look at, you know, at that way, but I, and I think it starts far before the ninth grade. It starts in middle school. And if you look at the history of the ACT, that is stated there. It's a building block and K-12 is foundational in itself. And so we should be, as we prepare and continue with, again, the Race to the Top, the learning guides, this should all be embedded in, in what is being, being taught and how it's being taught to the kids. And I'll use Steve Reynolds' language for the last five years. He's always said, how do we get these kids to understand the value of education? Well, this is what the Race to the Top is doing. In addition to our community education partnerships, we're bringing it all together. But I for one, don't in any way discount the results of the ACT because they are testing standards and curriculum. And, and that's something that, well, I think you've answered it. I think you're on the path. We're all on the path and we should see nothing but improvement from here on out.
I agree. And I think the thing that's important to me is we want to make sure that all of our kids have the opportunity to go to college when they graduate, whether they choose to go to a tech school, whether they choose to go straight to work. We still want them to have the foundation that they need to be successful and have the opportunity to go. So I agree with you. For that respect, I think we, we teach our students and say, this is why this is important. And even though if you, if you are not on that path right now, it doesn't mean that four years out of high school, you won't change your mind and be on that path and that's okay. So we need to build that foundation. And I think there's a lot of things that we can just do to, to make our kids test-wise, quite frankly. I mean, something as silly as on some tests, if you totally guess at the answer and you get it wrong, they, they dock a point. On other tests, you don't get docked for guessing. So you actually have to teach kids that, hey, if you can narrow these answers down to two out of four, then take an educated guess if it's this test. But if it's not this test and you don't know, don't guess. That kind of thing to help them so that then they have, of course, we want them to have the core content, we want them to have the knowledge, but we also want them to be smart, street smart about what it takes to get into college and what they need to be able to do and have all of that in their arsenal, if you will, as they go forward so that they can be successful no matter what they choose to do. So I think that's the value that we have to teach our kids about that.
Mr. Stokes, I mean, Janice, anybody want to jump right now?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, this is a, a great topic and I think that some of the thinking of legislators as, as regulations have been put into place, sometimes we scratch our heads. But you know, the long and short of it is we've got great people working in the right places and students are doing the things that they're being asked and we are going to stay the course. And we believe in our system, we believe in our people, and we believe in our students. So we, we believe we're in the right trajectory, as it were, and are anxious to see how we do next year.
Well, with that, thank you all for the, the presentations, but the seriousness of going forward, and I think we're all on the same page.
Thank you for having us.
Agenda item number 10, informational update on the use of mobile radios and mobile phones by district staff, and that's Janice Arthur Townes.
Sorry, Ms. Kima was a little anxious to get up here. Janice Townes, IT Director for the Record, Presidents Swarzak and members of the Board. I'd like to take the opportunity this evening to kind of provide you some information on where we're going with mobile devices throughout the district. Up until June of 2013, we utilized the Nextel push-to-talk radios until they stopped doing business. We used those on all of our 60 bus, buses, and we also use those for our administrative and our support staff. When Kevin Kearns and I understood the direction to discontinue that service through Nextel, we began to look for an alternative to provide us the communications that we needed both for safety and just to manage our business. As we looked at different carriers and different radio providers, we settled on AT&amp;T and we looked at their, or we settled on their enhanced push-to-talk solution. One of the things that pushed us over to ATT, ATT solution was the fact that Kevin had a requirement that it be able to be mounted on the bus fixed. He didn't want it removable from the bus and he wanted the unit to be able to charge on the bus. And there weren't many, especially cell carriers, that could provide that option. The only place we could get it was in radio providers and those were well out of our scope of budget because they were well into the couple hundreds of thousands in order to implement that solution. The thing that we found with that push-to-talk solution is that it wasn't truly a physical push button like we had with our Nextel radios, it was actually an app. So with like apps, our user satisfaction was somewhat low. The reliability and the ease of use began to falter and our sites began purchasing two-way radios, the consumer side, they were having bleed-through, they were having conversations from Walmart and other surrounding businesses coming through. And two, it wasn't a secure means of communication for them to conduct school business on, especially if there was emergency on the site. So this time I went at it alone. I went back to some of the vendors that we had talked to before and I ended up working with Sierra Electronics out of Reno. And what we did was we purchased FCC license that cover all of our 11 school sites plus the district office. I have a 10-year license right now and that license provides each site to have two dedicated channels for their communications internal to their site. There are also two channels that are available district-wide to all of the sites for future build-out for emergency planning once we get to that point. The bus radios will also be going over to this system because they travel farther than the location of our sites. We'll be utilizing the digital repeaters supplied by Sierra Electronics for their communications. They brought down a unit, Mitch put it on the bus, he took it for a ride and he was extremely happy with the coverage. Now, when they go for field trips outside, like say maybe to Churchill or someplace like that, they will have to use phones because the coverage doesn't go quite that far. And to give you an idea of what the radios look like, the site radio is kind of the old brick that you used to see before, only thing it's a lot lighter. The bus radios is again, what we used to see before mounted with the push button. And I will tell you that when we talked to the sites about this, when they started buying their two-way radios, Transportation and Cherie said she wanted to go back old school. She wanted something old where she could push a button and she could talk to her drivers. The sites, most of them were carrying three devices. They were carrying their personal phone, their district-supplied cellphone, and also the push-to-talk radios that they had purchased consumerly. So they wanted to reduce the load. So as we look at this, I went into this with trying to make sure that we had something that we could build out, that when we get our new emergency management or our new safety guy and we, and we look at our emergency plan, that the foundation was in place. So with these particular series of radios, we, we can allow, as I already said, expansion between sites, we have our own channels, we have digital communications, and they're GPS-enabled. So if at some time we wanted to go to some type of routing system on our buses where we wanted to know their actual locations, these are supplied where we can find that information and map it out. So they have expandability and a 10-year life. So right now, the net of this project will save us $23,000 a year. It will not be realized until 16, 17 because this year, we use that savings to help the sites buy the radios. That, the, I should, let me step back just a minute. We have been spending $55,000 a year on radios and personal cell phones. I shouldn't say personal cell phones, but district-supplied cell phones. So we are now giving our administrators a small monthly stipend and we will still be paying a recurring cost for our bus radios, but even with that, we will save $23,000 a And that is pretty much it unless you have questions.
Questions, comments?
I just have one.
Oh, Stacy.
Being the technology person I am, but so we were using cell phones before and so if the internet went down or the phone service went down, we were done, right?
No, the cell phones, actually the cell phones that we were using, we had them on our wireless system and they also had their cellular coverage. So if the internet went down, say our internet, supplied internet, they still had the cell coverage as backup.
But if the telephone coverage went down?
The telephone coverage went down, then theoretically we could, the wireless could still be up and they could have communicated over the wireless.
And that won't be a problem now that we have our own channels, right? Those don't go down.
You know, I, I can't answer that question. I'm going to, I'm going to tell you in technology, there's always room for failure. So I'm not going to say 100%, but the likelihood is a lot less.
Will those channels be able to talk to like the fire department and the police department and will we have that coordination that we've had in the past?
You know, I think that is a possibility, but I believe it has to be coordinated with them because I know that they have different regulations on who can talk to and access their channels.
I'm not an expert in radios, but you might be able to talk to like the radios that we use for wildland incidents because those are UHF, but the 800 megahertz radios that are generally used for municipal applications. I don't know if, but I'm not a radio expert, but I, because I'd seen UHF up there and I don't believe the two mix.
Mix, okay.
Additional comments? Well, Janice, we look forward to...
Well, Janice, we look forward to hearing the report at the end of maybe six months. How is it working?
They're going to be happy this time.
Well, you did it all. Okay. Thank you. Agenda item number 11, discussion, possible action to approve proposed changes to the following CCS policies. Second reading, policy 334, staff dress and grooming for possible action.
Susan Kima for the record. This policy was sent to all four bargaining groups, the nurses, administrators, classified and certified teachers association, and there wasn't any requested changes, so therefore I recommend approval.
Okay, Joe?
I move that to Carson City School District Board of Trustees, approve the proposed changes to policy 334 and approve August 25, 2015 as the revised date.
Second. Second by Stacy. Comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. Okay, don't go away. Agenda item number 12, discussion of possible action to eliminate the following CCSD policy. Second reading, policy 336, employee dress code for possible action.
Thank you, President Swarzak. Susan Kima, once again for the record. It was found that there was a duplication of dress code policies. There were two policies in our policy manual, so this is a request to remove 356 as a policy. You will see this language appear as a regulation in the next agenda item.
Motion?
I want to roll, I can do this one too.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
I move that to Carson City School District Board of Trustees, approve the elimination of CCSD policy 356 and approve August 25, 2015 as the approved date.
Second by Steve. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Discussion on newly, okay. Discussion on newly proposed CCSD regulation, regulation 334, staff dress and grooming for discussion only. Sue?
Thank you. Language from policy 356 was used as a reference for this regulation which complements policy 334 that you approved tonight. As with the dress code policy, all employee groups had an opportunity to provide feedback and what you have in your board packet is a collaborated, result of the collaboration between the four bargaining groups and the district office. At this time, if you have any questions or comments, feel free.
What's a muscle shirt? I know what a tank top is. Is a muscle shirt like the spaghetti strap version that like bodybuilders wear?
I would think, I think so.
You just cut off sleeveless.
Tank tops, muscle shirts.
You still have like a regular t-shirt knit.
Yeah, yeah. There you go. Put me on the spot.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Joe.
And honestly, I read through some of this, not all of it, but with, don't know if it's a concern in the district and I haven't seen it necessarily, but with younger, you know, teachers coming out of college and whatnot, it seems like with younger people these days, it's more common for pants to be drooping lower and lower and lower. Do we have something in here that says at some point we'd like you to wear suspenders or something?
We tried to emphasize professional dress and as far as a dressing specifically, say, in dress pants.
Is that just something the site administrator has the ability to say, you know, hey, Mr. so-and-so, could you?
So this, this policy that you see reflects the language that was in that previous policy that you just removed. It also, as we check back with Nevada Pool Pact, they have recommended policies and this is a, a lot of the wording came from that particular policy. We try to make it, if you make a dress code policy so strict, then everybody starts checking boxes and every little detail, you try to make it as global, but yet with some timely pieces in there that are business rules that everybody can abide by.
Do we have much history with having many issues in this area?
I would say, I can only speak for myself as a former principal, it was just very periodic or just, you know, sometimes, sometimes new teachers don't have their first paycheck yet to have their wardrobe ready to go for the full season and sometimes they come the best dressed, you know, so it just, it just depends periodically and usually it was just maybe a mention, hey, you might want to save that for the weekend and.
Bet you rarely had somebody that was consciously trying to.
Correct. Make a statement, is that what you, yeah, no. We have a professional group out there.
Just one question on the exceptions under number three, employees working operations services, you know, you got the maintenance custodial. I don't know, we got a pair in there and I don't know if that should be there, but after material services, but what is different about informational technology? And Janice, maybe you could do this, you have a dress code, a different dress code?
Because a lot of times they're crawling on the floor to do wires, to do service, so a lot of times they're in spots that wouldn't allow or wouldn't be appropriate if they had on a dress.
And then as far as nutrition services too, they have their own, their hair has to be up, need to make sure their nails, they don't, particular things are groomed in different ways that are required for the teachers. The same with our custodial staff as well and bus drivers. Certain things just don't make sense when you're behind the wheel of a big bus.
Okay, Laura?
Just one last thing I noticed, for, under, on page one, one and two, for the men and for the women, the men's languages are similar tight-fitting outfits, spandex, zycra as an outer garment, and the women, it's similar tight outfits. So just, I don't know, be consistent between the men and the women and either say tight-fitting or just tight outfits. I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Okay, Sue, I think you might be finished for a minute.
Thank you.
Agenda item 14, informational update on student enrollment for 2015-16 school year to include changes in the per people funding mechanism. AJ.
AJ Feeling for the record. So tonight, I don't have a long presentation, but we've talked a little bit about the changing ways of Nevada school funding and so the, one of the primary pieces and what we depend most on is enrollment and we've talked a little bit about it, but just to go through in a little bit more detail as we can understand it better and I think really the impact that it has on us as we go forward throughout the year and future years. So looking at, first, just a little historical and I just went back six years where our enrollment has been. And again, we have unweighted and weighted is what matters for the per people amounts for the calculation on how much DSA revenue we receive, but unweighted is just how many kids are actually in our schools. And so you can see, this number was significantly higher prior to the Great Recession or whatever you like to call it, but from 7,656 kids and dropped, dropped, and then we start up, down, up, and what I'll get to is we look like we're coming down again. So we're at this point where I think we're zigzagging a bit and hopefully we're kind of hitting a bottom that we can at least maintain or hopefully grow from there. On a weighted basis, again, you basically see the same thing, so it's a drop, it's a drop, and then up, down, up. And again, this year it looks like it's going to be dropping. So this is the, is actually not the latest information because we got more about two hours ago, so that was before, or after I put this presentation together, but here's what we're seeing so far in the schools and this is a count taken every day. So you can see, it has, here's the actual count of students in the building on day one, day two, three, four, five, six, and then this is the number as compared to last year with how many kids were in the buildings on day one, day two, day three, and this is the difference. So obviously a very significant difference. That is closing and closed more as of the latest information today. But the, when you take this number and this, I have broken down into, we receive it broken down by grade level and you weight that out, on a weighted basis, that enrollment number is 7286.6. Last year on count day, we were 7326.6. So we're down about 40 kids on a, on a weighted basis at this point. Now, in any previous year, that really wouldn't have been a concern from a budgeting standpoint because there was hold harmless. And so hold harmless was if your, if your enrollment dropped from year to year, you were allowed to use the previous year's enrollment. If it dropped by more than 5%, you could actually go back two years if that was even a better number for you. But we found out with the new legislation that that no longer applies. So hold harmless is now only for catastrophic circumstances where you only get it if your enrollment drops by more than 5%. So the fact that we're down 40 kids on a weighted basis, it really does matter and it matters right now. So as that count, the counts of kids are happening, count day has been a tradition in Nevada, I think for a very long time, and it is going away. This year, there will still be a count day, but it's really, it's a technicality because they need to, they need to do it basically to check for, for hold harmless purposes, which, confusing myself, but going, going forward, well, they need to check for hold harmless purposes if it's by more than 5%. Sorry, I was confusing myself. So if it's by more than 5%, then hold harmless would still apply, but then after this year going forward, there will no longer be a count day. It's every day counts and that's, we'll get to here. So now it goes to average daily enrollment or ADE. So four times a year, the district will have to report, October 1st, December 1st, March 1st, and July 1st. And it will be a report that takes the daily average of enrolled students in the three months preceding that date. So it's not exactly aligned to quarters. Obviously it goes over 12 months and our school year is basically nine months. So the October 1st report would really only have half of August and September, but that would, that would count. So what's interesting about that is the district throughout any given school year loses kids and that's something we've talked about and I have some historical information to show you on that impact, but it, I'm not sure if this logic is, is perfect, but to try to put that in perspective of what, what it matters for a student to be enrolled, is, I mean, if you think of every kiddo, every day, bringing $38.37 with them and as they walk in that school door, they're depositing it every single day. That's basically what we get. We take, we get $6,908 for each student, but that's if they attend the entire year. So every day they're not enrolled, we're losing $38.37. I will come back to the impact of that in a circumstance here, but looking at, going back three years and seeing what the history of this is, and I realize it's kind of a small font, Dr. Delphine, I'm sure is laughing as, as I say that, so I apologize, but what I tried to do was look back at the past three years and trying, there's no precedent really for this and so trying to gauge it, we don't have really a way to pull average daily enrollment in the way that it is described in legislation from past years. So what I, what I had to do is look at, we get a report every month of what our enrollment is and that's been going on for a very long time. So looking back historically in those, those reports, looking at what happens to the enrollment every month over time. And so you go back to fiscal year 13, which is the 1213 school year, and in, the way DSA, Nevada Plan worked at that time, you had your count day number, our count day number, weighted enrollment was 7,362.4. We got $6,098 per student for a total of $44,895,915. But now if you apply kind of this current logic, and again, the, the numbers are not perfect in the sense of what the intent is, but trying to get some kind of baseline for how our numbers change month to month and looking back at the averages from each month, you can see that our weighted count starts at that count day number, but then it slowly declines as the year goes on. And so when you sum up all of that, we would have received $44,435,830, which is a difference of $460,000. And so in that year, we received the 44.8 million, almost .9 million, but if the current funding mechanism was in place, we would have received significantly less money. Going to 14, you have not quite as drastic of a drop. So you can see there is a drop, but it's not, not of the same magnitude. And so in this case, we would have lost $135,000. If you go to fiscal 15, so this is last year, school year 1415, we started at that 7326.6 and that, that was the number we used, that was what we budgeted off of last year, but then you see there's quite a decline once you get to the last quarter. And so the impact there is just shy of $500,000. So two out of the last three years, the impact has been almost five, would have been $500,000 less than what we actually did receive. So what that looks like, just to kind of put in perspective, on average, what we lose, if quarter one is your base and looking then from quarter to quarter, about 33.8 students in the first quarter or a loss of .46%, 78.5 students then going into the third quarter are 1.07% and then down 116 students or 1.58%. And again, that's, that is a significant loss. So if you take that logic back to this, and so, again, to put an emphasis on what every day matters for every student, and $38.37 in the greater context of 48 million doesn't seem like a whole lot, but let's say that if this was the final enrollment on this day, this is where we ended up, but this is where we started. So each day, we should have been here, but for whatever reason, these kids weren't, kiddos weren't showing up at the door of the building on those days. Just those five days, one week, the district lost $14,300. So, you know, and it's, you think of it as the beginning of the school year, families are still on vacation, there's all these great excuses, but that's a significant impact in five days. And so then you extrapolate that over a whole school year, that, that impact just grows, grows in magnitude. If you have 100 kids not enrolled for 100 days, times that $38 basically per day that of value, that's $380,000. So it adds up. Last slide. So just kind of some things that are going on outside of just the enrollment, but, so the Department of Education is going back and revising and rebuilding their equity allocation model. allocation model. That is, so like when the state comes down in SB five, or whatever the funding bill is, they say, okay, every district is going to get this year, it's five thousand seven hundred and ten dollars per student. And then they take that number and they plug it into this equity allocation model, which is a ridiculous twelve spreadsheet monster. And, and they take all these variables into consideration and then spit out, here is what your district gets based on all your variables. And so that's where we get the six thousand nine hundred and eight dollars where we ended up. And so they're going back and trying to, it hasn't been looked at in a very, very, very long time. And so I'm, they've, I've made some friends there over the past year and a half and I'm going to be on a committee to help them go back through that and try to, part of it is reevaluate, not only just looking back at it and is everything right, but does it make sense in the context of the direction the state is going? And so that'll be a part of the conversation too, which will be interesting to be a part of. So two things going forward that will have a big impact. Special education funding, which was talked about and full day kindergarten funding. And so what's interesting is next year, the amount of special ed funding actually jumps by about ten thousand dollars per unit. The district currently gets eighty-one units of funding, but that, that's a pretty significant increase. And what that's doing is it, it's ramping things up for where they want the special ed funding to be in fiscal year eighteen, when they're going to move to a weighted, weighted per people amount for that. For full day kindergarten funding, this year, the funding is seventy-five million. Next year goes to ninety-five million. So again, it's kind of ramping up for ultimately in fiscal year eighteen, they want to have kindergartners weighted at one point oh. So I think it recognizes the hope that there will be more revenues coming into the state. Next year, they didn't really do much this year to help that out. But again, so in fiscal year eighteen then, kindergartners, we waited at one point oh. We don't know the weights of some of these other items, special ed students. It will be a one point something. In some of the BDRs, they were talking about a double, basically a double weighted funding. Some were down, I think, at one point two five. I have a feeling it will hopefully end up in the one point five, maybe more range. But it is limited, you, you cannot receive it on more than thir, if, your special ed population cannot exceed more than thirteen percent of your total population. So if you, our special ed population, I think, I have it at thirteen point three percent of our total population, we, we would receive, we wouldn't receive it on that point three percent. There's, there'd be no extra funding for them. So ESL students, it's supposed to progress over five years and, and slowly increase. And I don't know if that's a, you know, relative to the expected funding to make that up, but there was a kind of a slower, slower rollout for that one. And then gate students eventually, they want to, they want to try to build that in there and there'd be a wait for gifted and talented students. Right now, it's a, it's a side grant, but I think the ultimate intention is to, to build that into the Nevada Plan itself. So the one thing, one of the things with the, the counts of kids coming in, our, our kindergarten population is, is down this year. And trying to, as I try to project populations, most grades are easy. Kindergarten's hard because you don't really have a precedent for it. So I made some friends with some folks at the Department of Health and Human Services who are, work closely with the state demographer. And they have an amazing database of every single birth in the state, but they can filter it out by residency. So for example, if, you know, there's a Carson City resident, but, and the child would be a Carson City resident, but is born at a hospital in Reno, I would be able to, to know that, know that their resident is actually, or it's actually a Carson City kiddo. So what'll be nice is they, they, Department of Health and Human Services and the state demographer are basically going to be working together to provide me this information going back to like the nineteen seventies, which I'm really excited about. I, because I like that sort of thing. But, but what's, but what's really neat too is they have the ability in working with the state demographer, they can actually put, and I don't know exactly what it looks like, but a geolocation on it. So not only will I know like where, that they're born in Carson City, but I can have an idea of like what area of the city and then other demographic information. So as we look, we look at these different populations, especially with ESL population, you know, we, we can have ideas of what our needs are going to be going on into the future. It's interesting though, when you look at kind of, just kind of base data on what's happening to the Carson City student population of kiddos under five, if you go back to two thousand, two thousand nine, so really I think when the impact of the recession was hitting, the number of kids in the district that were under the age of five was around thirty-eight hundred. And as you go forward, basically every year it's dropping. And so now in this last year, we're, I think, at like twenty-nine hundred. So that population of kids under five is, is decreasing. So it's definitely something as we move forward and we're talking about projecting budgets and what, you know, that's going to be a, definitely an impact coming up in, in the future years. So it, you know, if that started in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we're, we're seeing it now. And that, I think is all I have. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions for you. With our, our enrollment numbers increasing that first six days, did our online enrollment, were there some students who were attending but weren't online, enrolled online? And so as more parents did, completed the online enrollment, did that push the numbers up?
So my, my understanding of the numbers that come in is, is it's kiddos in seats. So if, and Mrs. Keem, I don't know if you could help me out here, but the, I mean, it really, it's kiddos that are showing up in, in school. If they're registered, but they don't show up, they're not in that count. Is that sound, well, they would have to be registering if they're showing up, right?
Is it attendance?
On these first ten days, there are students that are on the books that haven't been withdrawn because we're still locating them.
Okay.
So this, the, a teacher should not take attendance on those students, but there's numbers that are still in power school that are, that Gina is reporting.
Okay.
I guess the, oh.
So I was just going to add to that and maybe just clarify, if a student is absent, we don't unenroll them until after ten days. So that ten days is kind of a magic number and that, so, so where we're not ten days into the school year yet, we could still see a drop in that enrollment number.
And that ties into my second question, just for parents out there, because I used to have my kids enrolled and be like, you're going to school unless you're bleeding on count day. And just, you know, so that they know if a student is sick or if, if there's a reason that they miss school, an absent enrolled student doesn't lose their thirty-eight dollars per day.
Right, right.
Okay. And then I guess my other point with that, with the online enrollment, if that did affect, perhaps we should do more pushing before school to help have more, maybe a couple, I mean, I know we do quite a bit, but just to make sure the online enrollments help. And, oh, sorry. And then I think it also ties in that the, like we, the Health and, or Health and Human Services that talked about students that aren't immunized cannot yet be enrolled. I think again, it's important that we make sure our students are immunized so that we can get them enrolled. And then finally, a question with the ESL projected for fiscal year eighteen, is there any talk or discussion on limiting that? Because that seems like that would be a percentage that geographically would vary and, and how do you adjust that if, you know, how can you cap that thirteen percent if you have an area that has forty percent?
So the, the, the special ed, I should say, in the, in the BDRs when they came through, I don't recall seeing anything about, I, I saw specifically limiting special ed, but nothing about limiting ESL. The Department of Ed is charged with very quickly coming up with what those weights are going to be this, I, I think they're supposed to, they need to figure it out this year for fiscal eighteen, which is two years away. So we'll, we'll find out more. You know, and ultimately it'll, it'll come down to what kind of revenues are available. I mean, I think if they're feeling comfortable with their own revenues coming in, they probably won't be as concerned about it unless they are really tracking that trend and they, they think that trend is going to, you know, kind of blow them out of the water. But at this time, I don't know of any limitation on it.
I guess the other, if it's not an elephant in the room, at least it's a baby elephant, is this privately, is the financing that's going to follow students after they've been enrolled in public schools for a hundred and days and how this is going to look. And I know as we got into cohort tracking and such, that we're supposedly better and capable of tracking where students that we've had or that we have go to. I, I really think it's going to be essential that we understand when we lose a student, where.
Right, where and why.
Where, where and why. I think more than ever, it's going to be, it's going to be vital that we, that we know that.
Thank you.
Agenda item fifteen. Discussion possible action to accept applications from retired teachers to fill positions in special education, math, science, English, language arts due to critical labor shortages as allowed in our NRS two eighty-six five twenty-three and SB four oh six for possible action. Dr. Jose?
That's a mouthful. Thank you, President Swarzak, members of the boards, district staff. About three weeks ago, I had an opportunity to meet a retired special ed teacher who just kind of walked into doors and said, I heard you had some vacancies. I know you're director's student support services. I worked with her in a different district. And would you be interested in possibly looking at me as a possible hire? So I spoke with her for quite a long time and asked her all the questions about, you know, where is she in PERS, you know, how long has she been retired and all that great stuff? And just so you know, I have fine tuned my staff so that if they see a special ed teacher or smell one within a mile radius of the district office, they should go out and get them for me. So they're, they're pretty well tuned in to what our hard to fill positions are. So what happened after that was a series of meetings with not just this person, but also with PERS, because I've never really filled out a form like this before. So I actually went in in person and the counselor told me what the critical need position form will need to be filled out and you have a sample of it in front of you. And I filled it out kind of on my own after I had some direction. And I, I started to think about all the hard to fills after that, not just special ed. And by the way, if you saw NBC nightly news this weekend, they had a report about special ed vacancies and math across the nation. So it's not anything new. You, you guys have heard about this for many years, but it, it's getting to more than critical in special ed and in math. So I decided to go ahead, if I was going to do this for special education, why not go for math and English and science as well? Because they can be just as hard to fill. Case in point, my first year here for Pioneer High School, I could not find a math teacher for half a year. We went and spent thousands of dollars just for one position to try to find for Mr. Zona. We finally found him on a job website. It was an affiliate at Monsters website. And he lasted for all of one year and then we were out of math teacher again. So I never know when those things are going to happen. In special ed though, I should correct my own form, it's been ongoing. It's been here since I've been here with regard to critical need. And I asked PERS, do I have to spell out each kind of special ed teacher? Speech path, psychologist, OT, PT, you know, learning disabled, autism. They said, no, you can just use special education teacher. So just so you know, that covers a gamut of people that we're talking out about with regard to specialized areas within special education. So it covers everybody. And the PDF form is kind of funky. It starts off really big when you type it in and then as you put more words in, it gets to shrink like the font that AJ uses, which is negative five. But we have tried all ways of getting the word out with regard to our hard to fill and you've heard me say that up here a few times, online, face to face, off the street, referrals by friends, anybody at this point. So hence before you why I have four that I'm looking for tonight for your approval with regard to critical need. It's also important to know that every two years I need to revisit this plan with you. So it's not forever. So if all of a sudden we get a flush of special ed teachers every year, that would be a good problem and they will not be on twenty eighteen's, or I'm sorry, twenty seventeen's Board Agenda Item, for instance. So we need to keep checking to make sure that we're doing whatever we can do. So tangential, tangential to this conversation, a second person showed up who is a retired special ed teacher and got word of this. And, and this was for Boarder Wick Bray's vacancy. And I nearly talked her out of it. I said, do you really want to do this? Because I, I want to make sure our retirees are happy to and, and they're filling a great need for their families. So I, I spent some time with her and just making sure she was really thinking about everything. And so after interviewing her, and I, I know her, she's, she was a great teacher for us, I said, do you really want to do this? Do you, you know, it's that old daily grind thing. And after a lot of reflection, she said, yeah, I want to do this, Jose, so sign me up. So I, I believe I'm very careful about who is going to come in through the doors. Not every retiree will make a good teacher again and they don't. Just like, you know, we have employees that are here one year and go on the next. So that said, I'm here to kind of get your stamp of approval and be able to fill these hard to fill positions.
Jose, it makes sense to me. My question though is when we talk about, should we consider these retired, I'm just asking for a little education.
Sure.
Wouldn't we be discriminating if we didn't give them an equal opportunity to apply? What's the, you know, educate me on that a little bit.
Oh, great, great question. Then think of it from that angle. It's, it's non discriminatory, but there is a obstacle with regard to PERS. They can't automatically come back without having these checks, if you will, in place. So if you're already collecting PERS, you can't go back as a full-time employee. There's all kinds of regulations against that because it's a really sweet deal. You get your PERS, you get a salary from the district when you're hired, you get PERS back contributed and you get health insurance. So it's, it's a lot of incentive, if you will, fiscally for these retirees to come in. But, you know, I have a friend who, who can retire right now at the age of forty-seven. He started in the state when he was seventeen. So, you know, it depends on what you determine a retiree may be anymore. So no, I, I wouldn't discriminate based on age. It would be really the obstacle of can they, can they handle it and will PERS allow it? So for instance, if there's an art teacher I can't fill, right now, I, I could not hire them out of retirement because I don't have a form or your approval for an art teacher to come back out of retirement.
Go ahead.
So I just had one question, question on the math. It looks like we have all those positions filled right now. So I guess how do we make, you know, it says that we have to make the findings that this, the critical labor shortage exists and one of them is that the number of open, the number of openings for the position and the number of qualified candidates for those openings after all other efforts of recruitment have been exhausted. And so I know there's somebody in that posi- And so I know there's somebody in that position now who is like many, the several of the people that we hired in the past, and that seems to be a good model for getting young teachers to be committed and energized in our district. And so I don't really know that I, that we could make that finding at this point, because I know there's an opening, but there's somebody in that position who is part of a plan that we've been doing for a couple of years, so.
Yes, and I agree with you, Trustee Contine. However, I want to cover myself for next year. So, if I get a bunch of folks that retire out of math after this year, I want to be able to have a catch for next year. So, you're right, we're, we're okay for now. But I said that about special ed last year. I thought I was okay, and then all of a sudden, beginning of the year, I had five leave in the first two weeks of school. It was crazy. And so...
I, I don't think we could make a finding then that there's a critical need if we have all positions filled.
Okay.
And I would say that it, I don't, I mean, I think that all of the others, I think there's plenty of stuff to support that. And I would say next year, if there's that position, then you just come back with, with the need for the, but I, I just, I guess kind of right now, it seems to be working where we're going with that. And so I don't know, I mean, I'd hate to see a position filled with a retired teacher when we have some, a young student who's part of kind of this young group of math teachers that we're trying to cultivate and bring forward here, who then doesn't get a job because a retiree filled it for one year before this person could finish their student teaching, or however they would do it. So, I think it's balancing those types of needs. And so next year, if that happens, I think it's a good solution. I'm not, I'm not against it, but...
Okay. Mr. Pavlakis, would that be okay?
I think that's entirely appropriate. My assumption was that the student teacher would be replaced, but if that's not the case, then I don't think the board can make the findings.
Okay. We have no intention of replacing her at this point, but you're right.
Is there any financial impact to us by doing this? Is there a plus or a minus?
Well, they're not coming in as starting teachers, because they would come in where they left off on the salary schedule, and it's usually higher than a starting teacher.
I guess my other question would be, is there any penalty for us if we were to hire retired teachers without doing this form? Or is it just that we can't hire them if they...
Yeah, there's a, it's a big no-no. Yeah, I'd be in HR jail. Yeah.
Okay, okay, I guess...
One of the things that happens is when we start paying PERS on that person and they're receiving PERS payments from PERS, that would be a red flag because they're receiving that money from a public agency.
Well, I just remember that we had quite a few vacancies the last year in music. And, and we brought back a retired teacher. Should we have done this form then?
Because they would, they would have had to have forfeited their, hmm, in effect, forfeited their PERS and come back as a regular active employee. What Jose is proposing, this is the old double-dipping thing that comes in, it's a dilemma that comes in. They continue to receive all the PERS, retirement, and in addition, come back at their, an elevated salary. It's like, so I'll come back at $150,000 instead of making my $75,000. That's the perception, and we have to be really careful going forward in this because of all the discussions of what you're saying.
Well, and that's why this, this critical need finding and designation only applies for two years. It limits the time of employment.
Correct.
We're submitting these to PERS. They still have to approve it, correct?
You bet.
So, and, so they could say no to some of these also?
They can say no way, Jose. Sorry, been meaning to get that in there.
Well, I think it's part of the discussion, and based upon, I think, Dion, you brought it up, you know, we have all the math positions filled, that if, you know, right now, if we were to, to even move forward this, maybe special ed is the only area we want to consider. And, and leave this thing open, and I don't think we want to get ourselves in a position for retirees to say, "Whoa, here's a, here's a great way to jump back in," and we start excluding a lot of people that would, younger people that would like to get into the district.
Can I follow that? I mean, just, just in looking at the, at the request, it looks like we have one vacancy, one to three, it says here that we have a history of turnover for science of one to three vacancies per year. We need one this year.
Correct.
And then the math, we've already dealt with, that we have two in English Language And that position, so we have two positions that have been vacant for one year?
Yes. Hoping to get them filled.
And I mean, so I guess, I guess I, I would, I'm, I feel really strongly about the math. I think that a vacant English position for, two vacant English positions for a year, you know, I think that might demonstrate a little bit more of a critical need. And, you know, obviously, I mean, I, I understand the special ed and, you know, it seems to be an ongoing issue. I guess, I guess at this point, I would support probably giving them the authority to at least try to do it, except for the math. And then look at it, I mean, can we look at it sooner than two years? I mean, it's good for two years, but can we look, can we say, look at it next year and say, "Well, what, what other efforts did we take? And how did we, how do we do? And have we been, are we successful? Are we still..." Because I don't want it to be that this turns into a long-term solution as well, that we need to continue our efforts to get, you know, teachers to, to come to, to our district. And I know there's, you know, problems throughout the state. So, we're probably kind of lucky in that regard. But, you know, I, I would say maybe we bring it, we bring it back sooner than the two-year period that's required to be reviewed by the statute. And I don't know, is, does anybody want me to try to make a motion?
We're still only signing one of your contracts with our educators, right? All across the board?
Not sure what you mean by that question, mister.
I understand where we are with our, with our union contracts and stuff, but each educator is employed for a year. Is that correct?
Yes, they have a contract.
Okay, I guess my question is, if we employ someone under this critical status, do we have the capability contractually to say, you know, "We've got an opportunity next year for someone who isn't double-dipping," to use a blunt term, and so we're going to go that direction to fill, you know, for this position rather than keep you on for another year?
Can I refer to Mr. Pavlakis on that one?
The Carson District sometimes uses a one-year-only contract. So, I would, in light of that comment, I would specifically recommend that we do that.
Okay.
And that was my suggestion, is that we don't...
Mr. President, I think Renee distributed a form, a revised form of motion, and it's particularly important that you adopt the findings that are set forth in the forms. So, if you don't want to make, talk about the individual findings, I'd at least ask that you incorporate all the elements that are included in the suggested motion.
So, we're using the long form?
Come on, Mrs. Contine, you can do it.
Can I, can I abbreviate it and just say that? So, here's the motion that I would like to make, and you can tell me if you think it's okay. So, I move that pursuant to NRS 286 dot 523 and Senate Bill 406, that in light of the efforts made by the district to fill the open positions in special education, science, and English Language Arts, as outlined in, by Mr. Delphin today in the documents that we submitted, that we are making the findings that are in the statute that, do you want me to read all of these into the record?
If you could specifically adopt the written findings that Mr. Delphin included in his designation forms, I think that would be adequate.
Okay, so, and we're adopting the, the written findings that Mr. Delphin submitted in the forms that he presented to the board. And based on those written findings, we find that the statutory provisions provided in 286 dot 523 have been met. For a period of two years, and we would like to review this in one year. And so that's for all of them except for the math. That's my motion.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments from the public?
Just that advertising on your last thing is spelled wrong.
Oh, thank you. Got it.
I don't, we're not adopting the misspelling.
I appreciate that, yeah. Nor the font size.
Do we have to have language in there saying that we're doing this in, in terms of hiring for one-year increments? Or is that, so you did say that? Okay.
And no muscle shirts. I'm just saying.
Go on, favor?
I, no. Okay. We're going to, approval consent agenda.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second. Motion second. Council of Public, say none. All favor?
Aye.
Close. Would you carry it?
Okay, Agenda Item 17, informational items for discussion only. Any comments, questions? Okay, the one thing I would like to highlight in there is that Wednesday, September 16th meeting of the PLC, and I think, if any, or all of us could make it, I think that would be, would be great.
And, and can we notice that is, that we might all be there, but that no business about it?
Okay, Agenda Item 18, request for future agenda topics. I see, see none, I take that as a not yet. Okay, oh, Ryan? No, okay. All right, say none, and we go on to Agenda Item number 19, which is adjournment, and unless there's any objections, we are adjourned.